Good evening Wakefield and Wakefield and welcome to the January tenth twenty twenty-two Town Council Meeting. This meeting is hereby called to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
And we have all six councilors in attendance this evening. Obviously, we are all remote out of an abundance of caution with the current COVID scare. So thank you, everybody, for making that modification. Item number four, public engagement. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone for public engagement?
Uh, no, no one that I'm aware of.
Okay, I don't, is there, so um, Sherri, is this, is this, this is a regular Zoom, right? Not a webinar?
No, this is a webinar. Yeah, it's a webinar.
Okay, so you can see everybody. So you don't see, there's nobody in the public. So if there's anybody in the public who wants to come forth, they should just identify themselves now. Okay. Um, I do believe that all the councilors got some additional information on one item on the agenda as well earlier today, just to point that out. Um, so we can move past public engagement on to item number five, approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes for tonight, the first being December sixth twenty twenty-one Town Council Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Vice Chair, but seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on the December sixth minutes? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Um, Counselor Santos?
Aye.
Counselor Dombrowski? I didn't hear you, Ed.
Yep.
Okay, yes, yes. And Counselor Danny?
Yes.
Okay, six to zero. And the approval of the December fifteenth Town Council Meeting Minutes, start a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Butt, uh, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on those? Well, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Counselor Santos?
Aye.
Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. I don't think I said yes to him. Um, okay, moving to item number six, a bylaw appeal. So this is an appeal of a notice to cease and desist order from bylaw one five four dash eight four three eighty-three Water Street. There is a lot of information in our packet. Um, Steve, do you want to give an overview?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, this is probably one of the more, uh, difficult situations I've encountered in the last fifteen years in this position. We do have a, a property owner who, um, has, um, over the years and probably twenty-plus years, maybe thirty years, has continued to put items on his property, particularly, um, vehicles, unregistered vehicles, which is part and parcel of what this bylaw appeal is about, um, for decades. Good person, um, really good person. Unfortunately, in my mind, appears to, um, you know, have a problem in, in hoarding items. I'm not a clinical clinician, but, um, that's my opinion. After being, um, uh, numerous neighbors, neighbor complaints, um, in the end of June, myself, uh, building inspector, health agent, and a number of other, um, town departments, police, fire, uh, DPW Conservation Commission, went out and did a, a long walk of the property. It's a large property on Water Street, um, and there are, there's a lot of debris and debris in cars and items there. During that visit, it also became evident that the, um, house was inhabitable and, uh, at the site, an emergency order was issued by the Board of Health, uh, essentially evicting, um, uh, the property owner from his house. He could not use it anymore. Uh, we don't take those decisions lightly at all, and that, but it was for this person's safety. We did, I did wrestle a lot with going a route, which would be receive a route. Uh, had a lot of conversations with Town Council Mullen um, and others, and effectively what that would have done is that probably would have, at the end of the day, stripped the property owner of his family homestead. I don't like that. I think that's the nuclear option. I don't think we're there. Um, and the, the property owner has made some very good progress in removing a lot of items from the property, um, and, and the home and the household. Uh, appears to be fixing that up. Hopefully he'll get back in there at some point. Uh, certainly not moving items as quickly as, uh, others would like, but is making progress. Uh, and there's a lot of stuff there. Um, I, I was at the property, I want to think Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday of last week. Lot of progress has been made. In fact, on that day, I think four, uh, unregistered vehicles were removed that day when I was there. I know that our health agent, uh, our, our senior sanitarian Coral Hope is on. Benny De Cristoforo, our building inspector is on, that they may have been to the property since then. Um, I know that Coral goes there almost every week, worked very, um, works very closely with the, uh, the owner. The owner is a gentleman named Steve Alwak. His family has been here forever. Long, long time. Um, my philosophy here is that I want to make sure the property gets cleaned up to the satisfaction of everybody. Primarily for the safety of the man that lives there, um, that we preserve his dignity. But I am also very aware that there are neighbors that certainly don't want to be looking at this all the time, and I get it. I get it. It's not moving as quickly as they would like, but certainly, um, quicker than it would be if we were mired in court in a receivership. Uh, situation. So, in any event, um, we did issue a cease and desist order under, uh, Master on the law, uh, under our bylaw one fifty-four dash eight, which requires the removal of, um, unregistered vehicles, and we did that, um, oh, sometime, you know, to, to move Mr. Alwak along. He has picked up the pace, again, probably not as quickly as some would like, but I think he's made pretty good progress. Uh, Mr. Alwak did appeal that decision, which is his right, um, and that's in your package, I believe. And, uh, he has since hired an attorney, um, who is online here. I can, I can see Mr. McGrail there right now. Um, and I'll tell you that Mr. McGrail, uh, over the, over last week was on the phone with the, um, tow truck company, arranging for them to get out there and remove more vehicles. So he is working on it. But this is at the point where, uh, you know, we need to move him a little bit quicker, and he did appeal that to the council. And I think that you may have some questions, um, and Mr. McGrail is here to answer them. We also have, as I said, Ben De Cristoforo, Coral Hope, Anthony Choi, our, um, health director is also on. I see him on here now. Not an easy situation, uh, but is moving in the right direction right now. And, uh, I'll be available as well for questions.
I'm gonna open it up, questions from the councilors, unless anybody else wanted to add anything, um, from the guests. No? Okay, so let's start with the councilors then. Any questions? Um, Counselor Dombrowski?
I'm just wondering, um, have, have any of the other councilors been to the site? Has anyone else seen it? Because I have, I was actually there today. Uh, I took a look at it, and I, I have to say, I completely empathize with the situation as, as Mr. Mayo presented, related to the owner of the property. But I equally empathize with the situation that the neighbors find themselves in. And, I mean, this goes back, obviously, a long time. But back in June, you know, um, this owner was, was on notice that things had to change. And as, you know, within the last few hours, there's still a huge tractor trailer there. I mean, the property is still covered with different items. I mean, like, the tractors, I mean, any number of things on that property. It looks like a junkyard, um, truly. And if you, and, and, um, it's, I mean, no dismeragement by saying that. It truly is a collection of so many different items, you know, rusted out, you know, clearly not working and the like. So while I understand that, um, this situation has begun to improve at the, if, if from June until January, this represents progress, then we're looking at three years, you know, going forward. And the bottom line is, he did appeal this. I mean, we have the law, the, um, the code that says what it does, and he has a right to appeal, which he did, and I respect that. But we ultimately, you know, need to adjudicate that kind of a question based on applying the facts to the code. And the code is very clear, and nothing that he represented in his written submission, from my perspective, justifies departing from, from that, from that code as it's written. There, you know, there are not some sort of extenuating circumstances. And again, I have complete empathy for this man and his situation. I don't know, and I'm not going to hypothesize about, you know, of what issues he, he might be dealing with, but he didn't present any of those as an, as an impairment, you know, to his, to his ability to comply with the law like anyone else. And so I, I have a real concern about the idea of us, us going forward. And, you know, just kind of cutting too much slack, if you will, um, to one person in, in a situation, because, you know, we, we have code, you know, we, we have code viol- violators, and we have enforcement when that happens. And if we don't, you know, um, do that um, in, uh, on a, on a regular basis, then, you know, the code really has no meaning. So, again, I have complete empathy for this, this, this man. If he needs help, I hope that he's able to be supported in that. But ultimately, I also empathize with these neighbors that have been dealing with this for frankly far way too long already. So, um, if we are to, you know, make any accommodations, my, my, my position, um, and, and my support would be behind the shortest possible accommodation to be made. And then, um, he's, he's, he's clearly on notice that, though, there will be consequences if he can't be compliant. And I, if yet, he's not hired an attorney, so his attorney can obviously explain that to him, but I just don't think we, we can, you know, kind of keep going along with this. It's, it's not fair to the other, to the, to the other folks who are, who are, you know, having to see this and, and about this property. Thank you.
Um, first, let me just see if there's, is there any response to that from our guests? Or will you, let's listen to all, you want to go ahead, Mark? Yeah.
Mister, Madam Chair, may I?
Please.
Great. Maybe it's appropriate that I would, uh, address the council at this time, very much respecting and understanding what Counselor Dombrowski has, has put forward. Uh, I guess for the record, uh, Brian McGrail with offices at six oh seven North Avenue uh, in Wakefield, representing Steve Alwak. And Steve is on the call. He, he's not, uh, doesn't have the technology means to log on, so he's dialed in. And he can address, uh, the council and answer any questions that you have. I, 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 I welcome that. I'm not here to, we're not here to, we're, we're really not here in any adversarial nature. He's, he's retained me in an effort to work this matter out uh, and help him facilitate, um, cleaning up the property in an organized, uh, fashion. As was mentioned, uh, Steve is the owner of the property at three eighty-three Water Street, uh, and adjacent land. Um, I don't know, is it possible I can share my screen? Um, Sherri?
Yeah, I think WCAT can allow that.
Great, thank you. Cause I think it might be helpful to kind of give an idea of, um, where this property is. And, you know, it's, you know, I'm not saying neighbors aren't impacted by this. They certainly are, but there's not a significant, a significant impact as you might imagine, because, um, when you look at this is the property. Can you see that?
Yeah.
The three eighty-three Water Street is, is way out back. Um, Mr. Alwak owns this property. It's about a half an acre in, uh, land size. He, and that's where the house is. He also owns this adjacent piece, which is gigantic, it's about four point five acres of land that abuts the Saugus River. And the majority of, of the vehicles that were involved and are involved are located in this area. There's a little bit maybe on this side of the house, but the majority is up, is in this area. And there is some down here. I'm not minimizing the impact that it has on the gentleman at three eighty-nine, but I just wanted to give, I thought it might be hel- helpful for, uh, you know, that this, 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 um, is not in the middle of a, a crowded neighborhood, if you will, with, you know, tons of houses that abut it. So, so that's, that's the first point. The second point is, uh, Mr. Alwak did get a cease and desist order pursuant to the town bylaw. Uh, one fifty-four eight. That was received on or about November fifth. So there has been a reference going back to June. I wasn't involved with the matter back then. I don't know if there were discussions back then. Uh, but certainly no formal order was issued by the town, as far as I know, because that was what was provided to me, uh, until November five, November three, which he received on or about November fifth. And that was regarding, specifically regarding the unregistered vehicles on the site, because that's what that section of the bylaw deals with. Doesn't deal with any other materials. It deals specifically with unregistered motor vehicles. So, Mr. Alwak had approximately twenty unregistered motor vehicles on that property. Was comprised, comprised of various types of automobiles. Some of them, believe it or not, collector cars, a fifty-seven Thunderbird, a fifty, uh, nineteen fifty Studebaker, or nineteen fifty-one Ford farm truck. And, believe it or not, a fire truck, an antique fire truck that was on the property. Now, it's important to understand, Mr. Alwak is a seventy-seven-year-old gentleman. Um, he's resided in Wakefield, uh, since the early nineteen fifties. This is his childhood home, where he grew up. And he is, he and his family are well-known, uh, well, very well-respected in Wakefield for many years. Uh, they're very generous with their time and resources. Mr. Alwak had no idea that what he was doing on the property violated, uh, chapter one fifty-four, section eight of the town bylaw. He, in fact, didn't even know that that existed. There's probably many people don't. However, what I can tell you is, since receiving that order from the building inspector, Mr. De Cristofaro, he's been nothing but cooperative and compliant, and he intends to continue down that path. Since receiving the order in early November, Mr. Alwak, I think it's important to note that he's accomplished the following. Ten of the vehicles, including the fire engine, have been removed from the site, completely taken off. Uh, he's had four, and this really doesn't have to do with the order, but it really goes to his commitment to clean the property up and sit in its entirety, not just to deal with the unregistered vehicles that are the subject matter of this order. Because Mr. Dombrowski is right, that there are, there is a lot of other types of materials on the site. So, in that regard, he's already had four large dumpsters of, uh, vehicle parts, various materials, and other items loaded into those dumpsters and taken off the site. So there's been a tremendous amount of cleanup, uh, since early November. He actually has also hired a person to help him pretty much on a full-time basis, a younger gentleman who's out there all the time organizing and cleaning up, uh, the property. These accomplishments are despite, um, a few setbacks that have happened during, uh, that timeframe since you've received the order. That includes a gas leak that occurred on the property that required the, the entire access way back there. Um, uh, so there was no access back to the property. For a few days, the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department had to dig a trench all the way from Water Street way back to the house, which you saw on the plan that I showed. That occurred approximately, uh, mid-December, uh, but, um, and that was about a three-day event. And he's also made this progress despite the holidays, um, and despite the COVID spike that everybody is dealing with. I think it's also important to note, because I think cooperation goes a long way and should be something of a consideration for your council, that, um, since receiving the order, Mr. Um, Alwak has allowed and welcomed town officials onto the property for inspection, so they can monitor what's going on. Um, in his, whenever he's been asked a question or has been called, he's responded promptly. He's retained me to help him, uh, with this process, as Mr. Mayo alluded to. It's, it's a very difficult process. I've been out on the site a number of times, um, with Mr. Alwak, and not so much in a legal capacity, but in a facilitator capacity to help him uh, deal with people that he's hiring, tow truck companies, um, and coordinating things out there. And, you know, making sure that, uh, everything is taken away in a compliant manner, because as you know, you have to be careful where you bring certain vehicles and certain materials. So, uh, I'm helping Mr. Alwak, uh, in that regard. And the other factor is, you know, th- this accomplishment i- is, is a great expense that is being incurred by him at this point. Um, and, you know, it's, it's self-imposed, but it is expense. Um, you know, I was there on Friday when the, when the vehicle, when the tow truck company took five vehicles out, and, you know, they want, they want payment on delivery, and it's not cheap. Um, and, and so, you know, that is something that is, is, uh, uh, a burden for a seventy-seven-year-old gentleman, um, on a fixed income, uh, and he's doing his best. Now, what, what we're really requesting of the council, you know, Mr. Uh, Dombrowski referenced, um, the bylaw. And we're not here, that the purpose of the appeal is not to dispute the, the order, not to say it's invalid, not to say that it was wrongly issued, not to say that there's a glitch that we have something to hang our hat on and we can't enforce it. That's not what we're here for. There is a provision in the bylaw that allows your council as part of the appeal, so you can, you have really different options. And your options are, you can affirm the building inspector's order. You can vacate it if you find it's based on incorrect view of the facts or incorrect application of the section. We don't think it is, so we're not asking for that. Or you can grant the appellant up to a hundred eighty calendar days to comply with the order, if such additional time is found to be warranted. And quite frankly, I think additional time is warranted, uh, when you consider the facts of cooperation effort to this point since early November. The fact that we're now in the middle of winter, the bad weather months, um, the cold. We're in the middle of a, of a pandemic that is spiking. And the expense that has already been incurred since early November. So, uh, Mr. Alwak has family members helping him financially. So we're trying to coordinate that to get this stuff done. And also combined by the fact that we're dealing with a seventy-seven-year-old gentleman that needs help. And, and, and with respect to the neighbors, um, we understand. I think Mr. Dombrowski is correct. Again, we're not here to argue. We, we're sympathetic. We want to cooperate. Um, and, and our purpose of the appeal, um, is to ask for more time. And what we're asking for is ninety days. As Mr. Alwak said to me today, you know, hopefully I don't even need close to that. If the weather turns, I'm going to get, I'm going to keep moving uh, as expeditiously as I can. Also, I know it doesn't have anything to do with this hearing or the appeal, but, uh, the Board of Health is here, um, and they've been very, um, helpful to Mr. Alwak. Thank, I want to thank them, uh, for their, uh, professionalism and the way they've gone about this, is all the town officials have. And, um, in, in, in their concerns on the house, Mr. Alwak is also in the process of hiring a, a contractor to deal with some of the Board of Health issues, and, and they were actually down in the building department today with the building inspector. So, we are here to respectfully ask for consideration of more time, uh, which is allowable as part of the appeal, which we have filed under the applicable section of the bylaw. One fifty-four dash eight. You have authority to allow up to a hundred eighty days for compliance. And, you know, that's in the bylaw. So I think the bylaw contemplates the fact, when you run into circumstances like this, the cleanup isn't going to happen overnight. Now, if we were here before you tonight with nothing accomplished since November fifth, then, you know, I, I think we would really, you know, it would probably be a tough ask, but we, it has been a lot accomplished since November fifth. I'm committed personally to keep working with Mr. Alwak. I talk to him every day. Uh, and we will respectfully ask for consideration of that ninety-day period, uh, to get this totally reconciled and fixed.
Thank you, Mr. McGrail. That's very helpful. Um, I'm going to move on to Counselor Chines and then Counselor Santos, and then Counselor Danahy.
And thank you, Madam Chair, and, and, uh, thank you, Mr. McGrail, for, uh, for that, uh, that summary as well. I, I had a few clarifying questions I, I just wanted to ask, and, um, a- actually, Mr. McGrail, you answered my first one, uh, which is just a confirmation, the, the actual request is for an extension of, of ninety days, uh, to, uh, to, uh, finish cleaning up the property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And is that ninety days from today or ninety days from November fifth?
It's ninety days from today.
Okay. Thank you. Um, uh, second question, and I, I don't know if this is best addressed to Mr. Mayo or, uh, Mr. De Cristofaro, but I, I just wanted to confirm. Has there been any other sort of notice of, uh, non-compliance with any bylaws, any other cease and desist orders, or is, is the correspondence that's in question just the, the November third notices? Is there anything else that, um, uh, wa- was communicated to, to the property owner before then, at least in an official capacity?
Yes, there was a, um, uh, an order out that talked about going towards a receivership. It was, um, uh, sent out by the, uh, Board of Health or the Health Sanitarian and, and also by Ben De Cristoforo. And I, you know, I wrestle with that, as I, as I said in my opening comments. I didn't want to go that route. Um, if we can do it this way um, and, and preserve the dignity, yes. So that did go out in the summer sometime. I want to say July.
And, uh,
It did not specific to this bylaw.
Okay.
We did not go through with, we did not go through with the receivership. Did not file it. Kind of threatened that we would kind of file it.
Yeah. At, at that point, did that notice, um, I, I guess if you could speak a little bit more about what that notice was, I mean, did we put together a specific timeline in that notice that said, you know, we expect you to do X by Y date, or I, I just to help and help, uh, me under, I guess, the, the chain of events?
Yeah, let me, let me dig that up. I hope it's in that file, this file here, that I took with me. John, let me pull that up. Why don't you keep asking your questions? I'll circle.
Okay. Okay, so we'll come back to that. Do you have another question, John?
Yeah, I, I just had one other question, um, which was going back to the bylaw and the appeal process. And, and this, through you, Madam Chair, maybe a question, uh, is a question for Mr. Mullen. Uh, the bylaw references, uh, the council conducting a public hearing on the appeal, uh, on the appeal at their earliest convenience. I guess we're, we're not technically in a public hearing right now. I, I just wanted, uh, maybe Mr. Mullen to get your read on process-wise. Is this the right forum to be looking at this, or is this something where we would need to reconvene in a, in a formal public hearing?
So I, actually, uh, I believe that, uh, you are in a public hearing right now. Um, the notice was given to the, um, the, uh, to Mr. Alwak, and, um, there's no requirement in the bylaw for mailed or published notice of any kind. So I think if you wished to, you could, uh, treat tonight as a public hearing. Or you could set a public hearing, a date in the near future, uh, if you wish to do that. And as Mr. McGrail said, whenever you hold a public hearing, basically, your options are, uh, to affirm the building inspector, to overrule the building inspector, or to grant up to a hundred and eighty days for compliance. And the consequence, as I see it, of, um, affirming the building inspector without allowing any additional time would be, the building inspector at that point is obligated to have the police department tow all the vehicles from the property, uh, at the property owner's expense. Uh, the vehicles would be disposed of, and the cost of disposition, uh, would be charged to him and put as a lien on his property, and he'd also be fined a hundred and fifty dollars per vehicle.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
Steve, you want to go back to the?
Yes, again, I, I, I did. I, I knew I brought the file with me for a reason. Yes, under Mass General Laws, chapter one eleven, um, we did a section one twenty-three and succeeding sessions from there. We did, um, order, um, our, order Mr. Alwak that this was a nuisance, not only the cars, but the other items. In that letter, we gave him twenty-four hours to reme- remove everything. Then that got, we, you know, we talked to him, got on the table, he started working on it. So yes, that did go out, uh, in July. That was from an attorney. That would have led us to the receivership group and, um, and talking about it, and, um, maybe Coral can jump in, because Coral's been talking to Mr. Alwak a lot, the progress he was making, that seemed to be a, a better. Maybe Coral can jump in, because Coral's been talking to Mr. Alwick a lot, the progress he was making, that seemed to be a, a better, although slower. So, uh, way to go.
Coral, you want to respond?
Sure, thank you. Um, so yeah, um, when we sent the letter out in July, I met with him and it probably took us about thirty days to. Just to get him to gather his thoughts, we brought him to the senior center. Went over many options with him, um, discussed what receivership would do, discussed what, um, he could possibly do. Um, from that day forward, he has done everything that I have asked personally. Um, I go in and check on him once, twice a week, we talk to each other on the phone at least once or twice a week, just to see. Um, what he has next to do, so not only does he have the property to deal with, he has to deal with his house, so. My part of this was to make sure that he had a sanitary place to live, um, and so his main order in the beginning of this was to. Clean out his home. Um, that's what he was working on diligently, um, his house was very full, um, and it is not anymore. There's still a lot to be done, um, but he made great progress on that. Um, I would say it's not a fire hazard anymore at this time. Um, the, you know, the gas company did come, put meters back on the house, and so, in doing so. He neglected some of the yard, even though he did get four yards, I think it was actually a total of eight yards of metal scrap. Removed from the yard. He had to stop working on the house because this order went out for the vehicles. And so now he's been trying to work on the vehicles and putting money towards the vehicles. So, i- i- it's one of those things where it's a catch twenty-two, he can do one thing at a time, really. For his age and for money-wise, he's, he's doing one thing to collect money to do the next thing. So, I, I know some people are saying ninety days, I know we could give up to a hundred and eighty days. My request is that you give him the hundred and eighty days for the vehicles, because he has removed the huge ones, there was a big, huge trailer. Um, a camper in front of the, you could see it from the road, that's been removed, the big fire truck has been removed. Um, several other vehicles have been removed. And at this point being winter, things are gonna start getting covered in snow. Um, and if he can at least work on the stuff that he can still see that's visible, but actually work on the house right now and get these people in there and working on his home. I'd much rather see her back in his home. So in spring, you know, he can work daily and see it daily, and we can be there daily checking on him to make sure that he's removing everything else that he needs to remove. From the property itself. Um, at no time has he said that, you know, he wants to, this is enough. Um, you know, he knows that he's gonna get rid of everything on the property, he wants that to be done. Um, it's not gonna be as fast as the neighbors want, it's not gonna be as fast as I want, but. I am making him do it in at least a manner that, um, is suitable. You know, he's not going weeks at a time and doing one thing, he's actually doing dumpsters full. On a weekly basis, or, you know, a couple cars a week, and that's huge. Um, considering the fact he's, like I said, he's collecting money from one thing to pay for the other thing. So, I, I would like to ask you if you could give him that hundred and eighty days for the vehicles. Um, so that we can actually over the winter get him working on his home, so we can get him back in his home, which is really, I think, more important at this time, is to get him his housing back.
And, and, and just to be clear, so he's not in the home right now, the home at the moment is not habitable, um, for him?
It's not habitable until we re-inspect and, and all the, all the fixings are done, yes.
Okay, tha- thank you, I appreciate the clarification and, and thank you also for all the, the work you've put in on this, it's obviously a. A, a tough situation and a, and a complex one, so appreciate the dedication you've had toward.
And just, just to give you an insight of how hard he is working, he also signed over his two goats to me. Um, the, and, and to him, those were his, yeah, those were his therapy animals, I mean, that, that was his life. That was probably the hardest, the hardest thing of this whole process that he's had to do, um, was to give those two goats up. Um, and so he did sign them over to me, um, and I have adopted them out. He does have the opportunity to, um, get baby goats from this litter, i- if they, uh, come out, if he finishes everything that he's supposed to do. So, you know, he does have some things that he's looking forward to, so. Um, I just want to put that out there, that that was a, a huge thing for somebody, uh, you know, to do is to sign over his animals, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jonathan, those answered your questions?
It, it did, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Santos?
Um, I can appreciate certainly, uh, the neighbors wanting things to be cleared out. Um, I, for better or worse, I'm frankly proud of. Working and living in a town that, that has so much compassion for seventy-seven year old man who is, who is trying. Um, to do what he thinks is right, whether or not it ends up being right. Um, and I know in talking with Steve over the last several months, could we have started earlier, maybe, and in hindsight, looking, you know, at the process? Um, but. The fact that we're, um. Treating him with grace and with civility, and if the neighbors have to put up with a little bit of, um. Unsightliness, not a little bit, I don't want to de-minimize it at all, um, having grown up in this town and, and knowing the property, absolutely not de-minimizing it. But, I don't think we gain anything by, um. Not granting some extra time, and I, and I'm probably leaning more toward the ninety days and then reassessing as opposed to going the full one eighty. But, um, I think. I don't know that it would be done any quicker if we didn't go this route. I'm also not comfortable with having the police use their resources to take care of this problem. Um, when it doesn't appear to be a public safety problem, um, so. This is a really tricky one, but I can certainly say, um. I, I trust Steve's gut on this, I, I trust how he is handling this and how he is handling this gentleman. Um, I understand the neighbors must be really frustrated, I, I would imagine I would be as well, um, but I think granting. You know, uh, maybe a hard stop on the ninety days, and if, in, if things don't happen at that point, then we can move more quickly. Those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Danny. Mr. Mayo, did you want to respond to that?
No, I, I, I just wanted to say that I, I think that, um, no matter what the council decides. Um, if they decide to give any, uh, extensions here, we should revisit this in thirty days. I mean, this should not be, let's wait ninety days and see what happens, I, I think we should have this back on our agenda, whether it's, whatever the council decides. Um, because I think that there does need to be some pressure on to make, to continue the progress here.
Okay, makes sense.
I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Danny.
Yeah, that, that's a great point, and that makes a lot of sense, so I, I'm on board with that, and, um, most of my que- my answers. Uh, my questions were answered, so. But I do just want to say is that what Counselor Santos just said is exactly how I feel, I think that. Um, I think that the town has shown compassion for this person who's lived in our community for seventy-seven years. Um, and I do feel for the neighbors, and if they were, a- and I would be quite upset. Um, and, but it sounds like he is committed to making this change now, it sounds like it. Took a while to get him there, um, but he is making progress, and I think the check-in in thirty days is good, and, um. Yeah, so I just kind of reiterate everything that Counselor Santos said very well.
Thank you, um, Counselor Dombrowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I appreciate what Mr. McGrail is doing and advocating for his client, um, I do think it is a bit disingenuous to say that he had no idea he was in violation. Until he got the letter in November, um. Our town, a number of, of, of folks, um, in their, the appropriate positions in town, they were out there in, in June, there was the letter in July. He was made aware, like, there's no question he was made aware, and, um, it also struck me when I heard that there were twenty unregistered vehicles. And now we heard there were ten. But five of those were apparently just removed on Friday. So, it would present to me as when there are deadlines that are established for the owner of this property, he seems to be more responsive. Because as of Thursday, there would have been fifteen pro- there would have been fifteen vehicles still on that property, is that right? Uh, so, you know, so that, that tells me something, uh, I don't think it's coincidence that those were, were removed on Friday. Be- when we have a meeting here on Monday, so, um, I would be in support and, and, um, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll move to make a motion. Uh, that we grant, um, a, um, thirty day extension with a review. Um, at, uh, on date, you know, at, or whatever meeting that is, uh, to, uh, consider extending it. Um, an, an additional thirty or sixty days based upon the progress that has been made, um, at the next time we review this in thirty days' time.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a, a second?
Madam Chair, can I just ask a, a question?
We'll give a second, so go ahead and let's have some discussion, yep, go ahead.
Uh, just, just asking a calendar question. Um, I, if we're looking at a thirty day extension, I believe that puts us between two of our meetings, and so, um. I think if we. I, 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 I would just suggest, and I, I, uh, trouble to, I'm, I'm having trouble doing this on the fly, but maybe. Uh, suggest a friendly amendment to Mr. Dombrowski's motion that we just try to line up. Uh, the, the length of time to the extension with our meeting schedule, so that we don't have a situation where. Uh, effectively, you know, the thirty days has run out, but we're not then meeting for another two weeks. Uh, just that it's something that we can review in real time and extend in real time if it's appropriate to do so.
If, if I may, Madam Chair, I, I was, I, I was thinking of the meeting that was on, uh, February fourteenth.
Okay.
So thirty days from now would put us just a few days beyond the thirty, so that would, I think it'd be appropriate to do the review on February fourteenth. And based upon the, uh, report of progress that is observed and made. Then I think at that point, the, the town council is in a position to consider an extension of an additional thirty, or perhaps, you know, sixty days. Up, up to sixty days.
Okay, um, so we have a motion, we have a second. Okay, and we have an amendment to the mo- so, Counselor Chines?
Uh, so I, I guess to that end, a- and thank you for, uh, again, I'm trying to look up meeting dates soon on the fly, which is never easy to do. So, um, February fourteenth is thirty-five days from today. I would, uh, propose maybe a friendly amendment that, uh, we extend the. Uh, the time period for forty days, just to give us time to have that meeting before the extension period runs out. What I, what I wouldn't want to do is put, uh, Mr. Alwick in, in a situation where he's in non-compliance, just because we failed to meet. That, that's ultimately the situation that I want to, uh, I, I want to avoid here.
Okay. Um, Counselor Dombrowski?
Madam Chair, if we, we do that on the fourteenth, I don't see what the issue is, because on the fourteenth, we'll have to decide that he's not sufficiently made progress to. Consider a further extension, at which time we'll have a different discussion on the fourteenth. Or if we believe that he has made, you know, a significant enough process for an extension of time, then we could grant that relief on the fourteenth. So I guess, rather than the thirty days, I'll say, uh, until the, the meeting of February, he has until the meeting of February fourteenth or the date of February fourteen.
So I think that that solves the problem, right, Counselor Chines?
That's fine, again, the, the issue was thirty days gets you to the tenth or eleventh, and a- again, I, I don't want to.
We want him into compliance until we have a discussion to, uh, to determine next steps, it sounds like to me, is the, okay. So, um, yeah, so we will word it so that, um, the period is up on the fourteenth, whatever that is, thirty-five days. Um, I know that Ms. Hope had heard, do you want to s- speak? No, okay, um, Counselor Santos?
Um, I just want to clarify Ed's motion, um, Ed, you had indicated that, um, if. Mr. Alwick was in compliance, we could continue it for another sixty days. My concern is because the statute gives us a hundred and eighty days. I'll, my goal would be to only continue it for sixty, but there could be some unforeseen circumstance, there, there could be a reason why. We want to go, you know, within the bylaw, so I'm not sure, I just don't want that sixty days to be. A cutoff for us if in fact, we would need to go a little further within the terms of the, um, bylaw. Does that make sense, Ed?
But I, why don't I, why don't I maybe just, um, withdraw and then just, uh, restate it, and then if that works, everyone, so, um, I. I'm making a motion that we grant, um. Until February, an extension of time until February fourteenth, at which point the town council will review the progress that has been made to date. Um, provided that the town council feels that the sufficient progress has been made over this, you know, the, this period of time. The town council, you know, would then determine, uh, and a, a further extension of time from thirty additional days to sixty additional days. But candidly, I, I'm gonna take out the sixties and say, just, let's review this on a thirty day interval, you know, and, and keep it that way, or, or, or as close there to as, as the meeting. You know, schedule allows for.
Cause that's fine, as long. A hun- we have up to a hundred and eighty days, right?
Well, I, I, well, my, my, I, I, I'm proposing this with the expectation that we don't, you know, um. We, we don't get to that point certainly, and, and my, my, my point is, he knew there was a meeting to, to, tonight, and then. Five vehicles were, were removed on Friday, I, I suspect that these timeline. Um, you know, the, the more structure we have with this, the better off we're going to be, and to keep in mind that this. Has already been, you know, an issue that he was flagged on, you know, about six months ago, so this isn't, you know, something that he just suddenly became aware of.
Yeah, and, but I think to, to what Ms. Hope said, you know, he's been aware of this, but there's been a lot of other things going on as well, but Counselor Santos, do you want to respond to the, to the timing issue?
I, I think as, as long as it doesn't preclude us from moving past, you know, a, a certain. Um, date within the one eighty, I'm fine with that, we can certainly review on thirty day increments if that's necessary. And I think Ed's motion allows us to do so.
Okay, very good, um, Counselor Chines?
Uh, so, so first of all, I, I'll second, uh, the motion, just to continue the discussion. Um, through you, Madam Chair, just a, a clarifying question to Mr. Mullen. Um, is there anything in the bylaw that precludes us from extending the period of time again? If we extend it today to the fourteenth, meaning, do we have the ability to effectively, uh, 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 effectuate a second or third extension? If circumstances allow, if we get a major snowstorm that prevents them from making any progress or what have you?
Yeah, I don't see anything in the bylaw that limits you to a single extension, the limitation is to a total extension of a hundred and eighty calendar days.
Okay, but we could do that in, in sort of thirty day increments, if you will, uh, if we. Those, okay. All right, thank you, I, I, you know, I think this is a reasonable path forward, um, you know, certainly even if we granted a ninety day extension. My request would be to get an update before the end of those ninety days. Um, I, I think there's a lot going on here, I, I think that there is a high degree of likelihood that. Uh, we will need to be looking at an extension after thirty day or thirty-five days, whatever the fourteenth is. I, I think that's appropriate as long as we're seeing some progress being made, but you know, given that this allows us to do. Um, you know, that check-in and, and to make sure that, you know, there's, there's still action happening, I'm, I'm comfortable with this approach.
Um, Counselor Dombrowski?
I just think from my perspective, I don't consider February fourteen to be a check-in, I consider February fourteen the date by which. There are, are concrete improvements to the situation that are presented before the council to allow for an additional extension of time. So, you know, I, I don't think, you know, uh, that's my perspective, and that's, you know, that's, I'm supporting this extension with that clear understanding. And if there are just, you know, minimal, you know, um, if, if there is minimal progress being made, then I'm not going to be in support of continuing to extend this along. Without, you know, something that is able, you know, something quantifiable that we can see, you know, um, in, in a meaningful way, and I, and again, I empathize with this owner. Completely, and I also empathize with, with, with the neighbors, and there's a balancing of interests here at this point.
Counselor Chines?
I, you know, I, 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 I think that point is taken, and I, I'm not sure that we're necessarily saying different things on this one, I, I, I don't. And, and I don't want to speak for anyone else on the council, but certainly my perspective is, I, I think that there's, there should be a clear message here that. There has to be substantial progress, uh, in the next thirty days. I, I think where I'm coming from on this is just, you know, given the circumstances that Ms. Hope described. Um, i- i- you know, this is a complex situation, and, you know, if it were as simple as towing a couple of cars off the property, that would be one thing, but I, I think we're dealing with something. Um, that is multifaceted, uh, a- and that is complex, and we're, you know, we're also trying to do this at a time when. You know, we have a global pandemic that's surging, and it's winter. Um, a- and so I, you know, again, I, I, I think the message that I would want to express as a, as a counselor. Who's voting on this to, to the property owner is, you know, we, we want and, and we expect to see significant progress. With that being said, um, you know, given the complexity of the situation, you know, if it's not completely buttoned up in, in thirty-five days. But we have seen significant movement, um, you know, I think that will count towards something as I consider. Uh, uh, you know, the potential of further extension beyond February fourteen, I mean, my, my perspective here is. You know, if we're going to take the tack of, you know, effectively forcing someone out of their home and putting the property into receivership. That's something that we, we shouldn't take lightly. Uh, I, I think there's a balancing of interests here, and I, I think this approach of, um, you know, setting a, a date of February fourteenth. For substantial progress, but having the ability to evaluate after that point, you know, strikes the right balance between. Um, you know, the needs that the property owner has and, and obviously the concerns that the. you know, the needs that the property owner has and obviously the concerns that the neighbors have as well.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Ms. Hope.
I just want to say one more thing as well is, I just want everybody to remember that he is a seventy-seven-year-old gentleman who has collected things in his home for seventy-seven years. And, you know, in six months, he's removed half of it. And so, you know, people with any kind of collecting disorders or habits normally don't make that big of a change in that quick of a time. And so I feel that he has done an amazing job with, one, collecting his thoughts, two, trying to manage his life the way he is, and also make everybody happy at the same time. And again, I understand that it's not as quick as I want it, the council wants it, the neighbors want it, and it's definitely not a pretty sight to look at from the backyards of houses, but we also got to remember that seventy-seven years, so and all of a sudden, we're asking him to do something that he just can't, you know, in the middle of a pandemic, he can't say, I need fifty people here to clean my house because you're not getting them. Truckers can't come, they don't have drivers to pick up these vehicles, they don't have tow trucks to come in and spend the day at his property, they're doing other things. So there has been other things, yes, you know, there was five vehicles removed this week, but don't forget, he hired a lawyer and we had some other people push for him to get these things done, so it wasn't that he was doing it by himself anymore. So maybe at this point where he does have some people involved, we can get things done a little quicker. But again, I just want to put in everybody's mind, from the health department's perspective, that seventy-seven years of stuff gone in six months is a huge ordeal for the mindset and just, you know, for the job at hand. So I just wanted to put that out there again.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, we know you're probably the closest to the situation and your insight is is very, very helpful, and you bring up some excellent points. Certainly about seventy-seven years worth of doing this. Obviously, this didn't happen overnight. I'm going to move for the vote, Brian, unless, Mr. McGrath, unless you have any, anything that you want to add that would speak to the vote?
It would not.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion that's been moved by Counselor Dombrowski, seconded by Counselor Chines, to grant the the request for extension until the date of February fourteenth, at which time we will discuss and assess progress and make a decision as to next steps within the language of the bylaw. Roll call votes. Counselor Santos. Counselor Danahy.
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski.
I.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so thank you all for being here. I know we spent a lot of time on this, but I think it is worth the amount of time that we spent on it, and I'm really, really thankful and grateful that there's so many people looking out for this situation on both sides, for both the neighbors and for the homeowner. So we will put this on the agenda for February fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Go to the council.
Okay, Mr. McGrath, I think you're on for the next one as well. So item number seven is the appointment of a special municipal employee to represent the public safety building. As you recall, I think it was actually just the last meeting, we tabled this item in order to ensure that we opened it up and held a process that was open and transparent, and we did advertise, and I'll let Mr. Mayo fill in the the details, but we did advertise for a, I guess I would have to be a lawyer to represent the town in this capacity and did not get any interest. And so Mr. McGrath has very generously came, come back and offered to do this. Mr. Mayo, do I, do you want to fill anything in?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I was on mute. I don't want you to hear the people behind me. In any event, though, there are times to time when we do have projects that we do need legal representation on for the town. That started back with the Woodville School, and we needed it on the Galvin School, we needed it on the Walton School recently. Because Tom Mullen is our town attorney, he represents, the town represents the board. So if we as a town go in front of the Board of Appeals to get approval for a project, Tom Mullen cannot represent us. We need a, we need an outside attorney to do it. And this case is the Public Safety Building, the Public Safety Building, which was built under a special permit twenty-plus years ago, around twenty years ago, I guess. We're altering that building, so we're going to, at a minimum, need to apply for an alteration of that special permit or a new special permit. I don't know all of the other idiosyncrasies there. So we're going to need representation, and again, it can't be Tom Mullen. So it would be great to get an attorney to represent us. And the problem would be that if any attorney would represent us and then have to go in front of the, they could not go for other clients in front of the town boards, like the Board of Appeals. No attorney would do that because that would ruin their whole livelihood. So there is a way to resolve this conflict, this problem, and that is to name this attorney, our special municipal employee. And we actually did this years ago that allowed any attorney representing the town in front of any board as a special municipal employee, so we wouldn't have to go through this every time, other than to name the actual employee, the actual attorney as special municipal employee. In this case, we went out to advertise, as we do for committees. We did receive one application, that was Attorney McGrath, who has done a great job in the past in representing us in the Galvin and the Walton School. And he has, again, given up his time again. He will not be paid, this is pro bono, he makes nothing, he loses money because he can't work on other clients, only so many hours in the day. So he applied, I certainly would suggest that he be appointed, we've had a great track record in the past. He's done a great job in those other projects, and I think that if you want, Madam Chair, to have Tom Mullen say a few words, I think he would probably echo what I'm saying.
Mr. Mullen, would you like to add anything?
Yes, I think I want to echo everything that Steve said, and just to point out that the reason for the special municipal employee designation is to avoid the problem of no good deed going unpunished. Whatever lawyer chooses to represent the town boards on a pro bono basis, makes a very, very substantial contribution to his community. And without the special municipal employee designation, as Steve said, that lawyer automatically becomes a municipal employee within the meaning of the State Ethics Act. And that would forbid him from representing anybody other than the town before any town board. By virtue of being a special municipal employee, Mr. McGrath would be forbidden only from dealing in the particular matter at stake on behalf of anybody else. That is, to the extent that anybody is going to go before the ZBA on the issue of the public safety building, Mr. McGrath would, would be limited to representing the town in that instance. But I think that Brian is an excellent, would be an excellent selection. He obviously has tremendous experience in Wakefield, great success in the field. And I think we should be grateful for his application.
Thank you. So Counselor Santos. Oh, you're on mute.
I don't want you to hear that I have a football game on in the back. I don't, it's muted, but it's an important game, people. So I think I was the one who either seconded or made the motion way back when, when Brian was appointed in the same position for, I think was the Galvin? No, something, Brian, you were appointed, I think, or when we created this position. Peter May definitely was a part of that. I am in fully, I fully support Brian being named to this, based on his knowledge of the town, the respect that he has of the people that will be working with him. So I know that he will, he has a strong vested interest, and he's knowledgeable, so I have no qualms whatsoever about us appointing Brian to this.
Counselor Danahy.
Hi, so I wanted to thank Mr. McGrath for applying. I'm glad that we did open it up so that, so that people could apply for it. I understand what a big ask that is of asking somebody to do something pro bono, and I want to thank you, Mr. McGrath, for stepping forward and kind of giving back to, giving back to the town you live in, and I think that it's a, I think it's a great win for the town, so thank you.
Counselor Dombrowski.
I just want to underscore that, you know, we did have a process here. We posted this, and anyone that was interested in applying could do so. And I do appreciate Mr. McGrath for being, again, willing to step up and do this. Again, he has a track record of other projects within this town, you know, that where he's served in a similar capacity at great success. And it is incredible cost savings, not just for the public safety building, but cumulatively, you know, what we have enjoyed as a town, and those of us that are attorneys, you know, and even if you're not, you know attorneys are not cheap. And so to have someone that has the expertise in having done this previously, I think is really important here. This was an open process where anyone was invited to apply. I guess, you know, my only question to you, Madam Chair, is, you know, Mr. McGrath, just to confirm, because I don't think it's necessarily explicit in the application, do you have any conflicts of interest, or do you foresee any conflicts of interest in the future if you were to serve in this capacity related to the public safety building?
I don't, I've actually talked, talked to town council about that specifically.
Great.
I do not, I had questions in that regard, and Tom and I both were comfortable with that.
I think it's important, you know, I think, you know, we've certainly done our due diligence, we've had an open process, you know, and we're fortunate to have a candidate who's willing to, again, step up and commit to the town, and thank you for that, Mr. McGrath, and so I, I support going forward and already on the floor, or is not on?
Oh, we don't have one, if you want to put one forward, that'd be great.
Sure, so I move that we appoint Brian McGrath as a special municipal employee for the purposes of representation as relates to the public safety building renovation.
Second that. Great, so. Motion made by Counselor Dombrowski, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion on this, on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Dombrowski.
Bye.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Danahy.
Yes.
Counselor Santos. And myself, yes. Thank you, all, and thank you, Mr. McGrath, for stepping up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I might just say that I appreciate the opportunity. I've lived in town virtually my entire life, raised my family here, and I just look at it as a way to contribute to my community, so. Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to do that.
We appreciate it, thank you for your patience. Okay, um, we have a number of license requests here. First, we have a pledge of license amendment application for Greenies Discount Liquors, DBA, Greenwood Wine and Spirits. There's an abundance of information in our packet on this. I believe, Mr. May, if I'm not mistaken, or Mr. Mullen, the motion would be for a simply a pledge of license amendment? Is that how it would be awarded?
Madam Chair, the, the attorney who's representing the applicant is on here too, yes.
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah.
Good evening, John Meridian, Democas Law offices, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, please continue.
Yeah, so we're seeking tonight, my client purchased the store last fall, and we had to change the lender who financed the acquisition. And we're seeking a pledge of the license and inventory to Northern Bank and Trust. I submitted the license application along with the security agreement and the promissory note, which the APCC requires. So you're correct, the motion would be approved on the pledge of the licensed inventory to Northern Bank and Trust.
Thank you. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines, any discussion? Counselor Dombrowski.
May I just ask you through you, Madam Chair, of Mr. Mullen, Mr. Mullen, are there any consequences that we should be aware of relative to voting in the affirmative on this?
You're on mute.
Mute, Tom.
He's shaking his head no.
I see a no, so I'll take that. The handshake is sufficient.
Okay. Great. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a vote. Counselor Danahy.
Yes.
Counselor Santos.
Hi.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Bye.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Meridian, thank you. Additional licenses, we have twenty-twenty-two common vicular license renewals for the Bread Shop and Metis Pizza World. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Butt, any discussion on the common vicular? No. Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Danahy.
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Hi.
Counselor Santos.
Hi.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, twenty-twenty-two entertainment license renewal for Metis Pizza World, have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Butt, any discussion on these? Counselor Danahy.
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Hi.
Counselor Santos.
Hi.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, class two license renewals for Brandon Auto Sales, John's Foreign Car Service, Dick's Foreign Car Service, and Vinton Vintage Automotive, do I have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Butt, discussion on these? Counselor Dombrowski.
I just have for Mr. Mayo or Ms. Dalton the same question, any concerns with, you've had over the past year with any of these applicants?
None. There's no issues.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Vote, Counselor Danahy.
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski. Counselor Santos.
Hi.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
And myself, yes. And finally, we have automated device license renewal for Metis Pizza World.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Butt, discussion on the automated devices license. None, Counselor Danahy.
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Hi.
Counselor Santos.
Hi.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
And myself, yes. And finally, on item eight, we have a request for a one-day liquor license for the Friends of Wakefield Hockey for a fundraiser at Subaru of Wakefield on February eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, from seven-thirty PM to eleven-thirty PM. Seconded, I had to let Ann do that one.
Jump in on that.
Yeah. Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Vice Chair Butt, discussions on the one-day liquor license for February eleventh. Hearing none, Counselor Danahy.
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Yes, with an invitation.
Ah, okay, well, we'll see if we can rank one of those for you.
I am kidding, I'm kidding.
I am got a little intrigued by Subaru as the location. Counselor Santos.
I, historically, it has been quite a time.
Oh, you've been, okay.
I have been in the past, perhaps, yes.
Okay, we're, okay, we're having, we're getting distracted. Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, moving on to the first of what is many budgets, and I see Mr. Gill appeared. So I am going to hand it right over to you, and we will get started with the council.
Okay, Steve, you want to kick it off?
Sure, I'll just say a quick, a few items. This is, again, the first of many rounds as we go through our budget odyssey here. I would say that the budgets in front of you today are, I'm going to say, some of the easier budgets of the town hall departments, there's not a lot. I would say that the budgets in front of you today um are, I'm gonna say some of the easier budgets of the town hall departments is not a lot um. Uh, to discuss there, any changes are contractual um and negotiated increases. Um, there is a large uh increase in the election expense budget. And that is because we have two more elections in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three than we did last year. So we um, you know, we try to budget for elections we know about, sometimes we don't know about them and they show up, but um we do, we do know they're coming, we try to budget for them. Um, without the election increase, with the special elections, these budgets would come in around two point three percent. Over last year, we certainly always look for efficiencies um in in every budget we do, and I think these are all very well um. Are are all very well healed. Um, we did meet with the Town Hall uh Finance Committee Subcommittee and Mr. Kenny is on. Who is the chair of that committee, we met with them last week and went over them with that group and he may want want to say a couple of words as well. Um, and um then Kevin will go forward. And then uh, Madam Chair, with your position after, your permission, after the budgets, I may jump off. If that's okay.
Um, Mr. Kenny, would you like to add anything or you want to talk about as we go through individual?
No, 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 I'll I'll uh take the opportunity to be brief and upfront here uh for two reasons. One, because there really isn't much to say about this budget or or these budgets. Uh, and two, as Counselor Santos pointed out, there is a great heavyweight matchup of two, two S E C. Uh, um giants tonight that I'm eager to get to. Um, so thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, you know, as Steve said, uh, two point three percent. Um, these budgets, a- as you're used to seeing, are a pretty benign is the term I keep using, maybe it's not the right term, but. Um, they're they're pretty uneventful. Um, and uh, you know, overall, uh, Steve talks about efficiencies. Uh, I picked on a few line items uh and tried real hard uh to 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 find some some flaws in in Kevin and Steve's approach here. And I couldn't find any, so uh I think it's pretty straightforward, you know, there was one uh particular line item that I picked on, which was the COA. There was a twelve thousand dollar appropriation, and I think our spend over the past two years had been some somewhere under two thousand dollars. Um, and that's due to uh gas, we haven't been using the vans because of the pandemic, right, so. Um, and it's now certainly not the time to cut a gas budget, so um, you know, overall, I I I think uh they were received well by the Subcommittee. And um, that's about all I have.
Thank you. Okay, so um, I just have a question, Steve or anybody, even Ann. So when we vote on, do we actually vote on these?
Normal procedure, because you vote on them, yeah.
We do, so we will have a motion to to vote on the amount, because then they go back to finance at the, I just want, okay, maybe you could just walk us through with the whole process. It's not just for us, but for the public.
All right, so so what happens is these these budgets, all the all the budgets on the town side, with the exception, well, on the town side, are all town council approved budgets.
Right.
Okay, that is what the um uh recommendation book says at town meeting. Uh, that is the motion that we will make, okay? The second prong of this is that the finance committee will then. Uh, give their recommendation. Normally, they're the same, sometimes they're not, we had a few years ago where the town council wanted um. Uh, one budget and the finance committee wanted a different one, and the motion was the town council budget, finance committee members spoke against it. Um, and the town council budget was what was voted on. So what we're doing here is we're approving these budgets for the 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 town council. As what the town council is going to present to town meeting. Finance committee will have a separate review of all these budgets. And we start that uh, well, Thursday night, Kevin starts that with this round, but it always goes to the town council first because they're your budgets.
Okay. Um, Counsel Chines.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, I, you know, I just wanted to point out, you know, I I think that that's certainly the process we follow and it makes sense. I I would just ask that as we get to the end of the process, um, you know, we have the discipline as a town council to sort of go back. Once we've approved all of the budgets and look at them in total, um, you know, I I commented, I think, kind of in every budget cycle, how much I appreciate. Um, you know, Dan Sherman's kind of forecast projections that we've looked at it before and 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 I find it really helpful just to sort of see everything in total. One last time before town meeting, just so that we we have a sense, not only about how do these, particularly in this case tonight, some of these budgets are like seven thousand dollars. But not only do we sort of put the discipline to review every single budget, but that we've got that that more holistic view so that we we see what the totals look like.
Okay. Good, all right, any other kind of overarching questions or comments? No, then I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Gill to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I I will try to be brief. Uh, first budget is the accounting budget. We're recommending this budget be increased nineteen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars of the current year's budget. This increase breaks down eighteen thousand three ninety-seven is coming from the tax levy. And nine hundred and ninety-three dollars is coming from a water and sewer transfer. There's an increase in personal services, sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars, which is a contractual and negotiated increase. Uh, there was a increase of three thousand dollars on the contractual services, that's in the professional services line item. Which is used to pay for the town's yearly audit. Main expenses within this budget is a twenty-eight thousand dollar line item for equipment rental. This is for seven copy machines and two high-speed printers used throughout town hall and over in the treasurer's office. Uh, we also have six thousand dollars on the professional services for the town audit. We use Powers and Sullivan, which is a local company, they're up on Quanipower Boulevard. Uh, we have eight thousand dollars for postage, which is used to bail accounts payable checks. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is four hundred sixty-three thousand ninety-nine dollars. With four hundred and forty-one thousand three ninety-five coming from tax levy and twenty-one thousand seven oh four coming from a water and sewer transfer.
Um, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved. Seconded.
Move by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Butt, so any discussion on this budget? Uh, Counsel Nebraska.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, thank you, Mr. Gill, I um, I just had a a couple of questions relative to. Um, what you just presented, one of them, you, I know you had mentioned the postage of of eight thousand uh dollars, but they're about, and. I I understand that in the grand scheme of things, that's not like the largest sum by any by any stretch, but um. Uh, do we not have the ability to um convert over to more like an online payment system where just like most of us do, you know, at at home? Where we can just kind of do it electronically versus having to like literally issue your cut checks, issue them, mail them out? Because it seems like from a process and also a cost perspective, it could be an efficiency recognized now.
Uh, it's a double-edged sword, so so, a a a lot of vendors are are not set up that way. Uh, some are, what we we do, we do do some wire transfers. Um, but the vast majority of our our A P checks are mailed out. I I'd probably say that probably ninety percent are mailed out. Ten percent are are done through a wire transfer. So i- it is something we can look, look, look at in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be helpful, um, because I know even, I, you know, um, again, I run a private business, but I know that. We we're hard pressed to like find a staff these days to kind of handle anything, you know, we have a lot of vendors, so. I think that, you know, across the board, not just accounting, but you know, wherever we can realize a savings there, and and also just, I think streamline a process, it seems like it, though it's an opportunity. The other was, um, I know that you had meant you've got and referenced contractual services. I see that the actual spend through uh end of uh December was at at thirty-one thousand one seventy-two. And I may have missed it, but can you just speak to why that's so much lower than uh what what's been budgeted?
Uh, the 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 audit is finished in the second half of the year, they they do preliminary work in the first half of the year. So the the vast majority of the spend is in the second half.
All right, and then that's that's consistent each year.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If there aren't, we have a motion to accept the accounting budget for a total of four hundred and sixty-three thousand ninety-nine dollars. Of which twenty-one thousand seven hundred and four comes from a transfer from D P W Water and Sewer and four hundred forty-one thousand three ninety-five. From the tax levy. Um, Counsel Danny.
Yes.
Counsel Nebraska.
Hi.
Counsel Santos. Yes, I wasn't looking at, yes. Um, Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
Counsel Chines.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Moving on to legal.
Uh, next budget is the legal budget, we're recommending that this budget be increased three thousand six hundred and twelve dollars over the current year. This increase is all in personal services and is for a negotiated salary increase. The expenses are level funded. The main expenses within this budget outside professional services, which is used mainly for labor attorneys or other expert services as needed. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is a hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Move by Counsel Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos, any discussion on the legal department budget? Uh, Counsel Nebraska.
Sorry, Madam Chair, there was one question that feel had, um, I I think there was a number here, I think it's like one hundred and seventeen thousand, I think it was. In contractual services. What what makes makes up that um much larger number than was budgeted? Is that from the litigation we had that um? We were dealing with?
Yes, uh, litigation, settlement at the Walton School, we we had to hire experts or uh witnesses. Those bills came in right at the beginning of the fiscal year. Uh, it did put us all the budget in that line item. And we'll be looking for a reserve fund transfer uh at the end of the year to cover that cost.
And it was that something that was not covered by insurance?
Correct.
Okay, I I don't think I was aware of that, so, okay, um. Do we have more detail on that? Steve, did I, did I miss details on that or is that something we're not aware of?
On on the Walton School? Yeah, probably um went through the permit building committee, didn't, was never anything that went to this board.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. Yeah. And there's some Butlerabb stuff in there too that was lingering towards the end.
Yeah, so I I assumed it was Butlerabb, I wasn't sure, but.
Okay.
Okay. Additional discussion? No, hearing none, um, motion is to accept the legal department budget in the amount of one hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Counsel Danny.
Yes.
Counsel Nebraska.
Hi.
Counsel Santos.
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt, yes, Counsel Chines.
Yes.
And myself, yes, okay. Tax.
Next budget is the tax collector's budget, we're recommending an increase in fiscal twenty-three of seven thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. This breaks down five thousand two ninety-nine to the tax levy and two thousand three hundred and sixty-six to a water and sewer transfer. Uh, this increase is all in personal services and is for contractual and negotiated increases. Main expenses within this budget, fifty-two hundred dollars for printing and binding, this is used to print the preliminary and actual tax bills. Uh, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars on the professional services, which is used in the tax taking process with instruments of taking. And a big item, thir- thirty-two thousand five hundred for postage, which is used to bail tax bills. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is two hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. With two hundred and thirty-six thousand six thirty-two coming from the tax levy and sixty thousand eight forty-three coming from a water and sewer transfer.
Do I have a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Move by Counsel Santos, seconded by Counselor Butt, discussions on the tax collector department, Counsel Nebraska.
Uh, I don't think we have the tax collector on, I don't believe, right, so perhaps Steve or or Mr. Gill, you could answer this. Um, the, if you look at the printing and postage, you know, that's almost forty thousand dollars, and my question is. In, you know, in twenty twenty-two, can we not better streamline even streamline even uh in opt-in or opt-out? Um, you know, where things, people are getting this information transmitted more electronically. Um, it's, it just feels like so arcane, and I don't know, maybe Mr. Mullen knows, you know, if what requirements we have in terms of paper statements. But I would have to imagine that if someone opted in for receiving things electronically, then, you know, that would eliminate the need for then having to uh. To to post mail this stuff. Um, does anyone that's on on this meeting, you know, know the answers to that?
Uh, Ed, I will, I will look into that again. Um, but my understanding is that per statute, they need to be mailed. It's my understanding. I will check it. It's crazy, I agree.
Is that, Mr. Mullen, do you have the same understanding too?
It's a great point, Mr. Nebraska, I don't know, I I gotta look into it. Uh, it it doesn't make sense that it should be mandatory. And yet there are slew of statutes that do require mailing.
So, Madam Chair, just in light of the fact that that's not an insignificant number here, and we have an unanswered question. I'd actually prefer to just um defer voting on this budget until we have the answer at our next meeting, I don't think it, you know, has much of an impact. I I know Fincom will look at it probably Thursday, but if they understand, uh, that's would be the only hesitation I would have relative to it, and I think it's a fair question to be asked.
I would tend to agree with you, Counsel Chines.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ju- just to some, I I think, historical context, this came up. Uh, either when I, either my first year on the council or when I was on on finance committee, we we did ask. Uh, tax collector Kelly uh about this. Uh, in in my recollection, again, I'd have to go back to the notes that I took at the time, which is now quite some time ago. But my recollection was there was sort of a combination of both kind of regulatory requirements around mailing them. As well as just the actual cost of kind of converting to a system that would have allowed us to go paperless was was material as well. So I I think it's certainly fine to look at it again, I just wanted to share that context, because I I I know it's a question that's been asked before.
Um, Counsel Nebraska.
I I think we can table it, I mean, I, you know, um, things change, and you, and over the last, you know, several years, I mean, we we've migrated more and more onto online. For so many different things, including our own, you know, many applications that we have, so um, I think we need to look at it, you know, whenever we have opportunities. And I understand it might be an initial, you know, like an additional financial outlay initially, but in the long term, it's going to be far more cost effective to do that if if it is an option. And and I don't know whether it is, but um, and and I apologize for not asking the question sooner, Mr. Mayo, I should have, should have asked it beforehand. Um, but um, I I think we just tabled this until the next meeting, you know, I I'm not opposed to the budget, you know, otherwise, but I think that that's an important piece.
Um, I I definitely agree with you, and I just, I think from an environmental standpoint, to be sending out that much paper is, doesn't make any sense. And we should be, from a customer service standpoint, and from a lot of different perspectives, so let's, um, so I can't make the motion. Uh, uh, do you want to make a motion to table?
So I just wonder, we just table this until the next meeting, and then uh, Mr. Mayo or Mr. Giller can report, or Mr. Mullen can report back, you know, on what's been raised here relative to the. Trying to streamline uh online.
I have a second, just, do we have to vote to table it? No, we don't have to, right?
I think you should.
You think we should, okay, so I have a motion to table the um tax collector budget uh until the next meeting or until. Um, until we can get some of these questions answered.
Right.
Uh, second. Okay, any discussion?
Um, just quickly, I would just look at the statute and it says that the bills shall be sent out. Now, it might say deeper down, I took a very quick, it didn't say mailed, though, so it says shall be sent out, it could say, it could refer to mailing somewhere within the statute. But certainly worth a look.
Okay. Great. Um, and to see whether there's any synergies with some of the other billing systems that we're using at the moment, which I know we've made some progress on. Okay, um, so there's now additional discussion, we will vote to um table this, Counsel Danny.
Yes.
Counsel Nebraska.
Hi.
Counsel Santos.
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
Counsel Chines.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Um, moving on to assessing.
Next budget is the assessors budget, where we are recommending an increase to fiscal twenty-three budget of fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. There was an increase on the personal services, six thousand seven twenty-nine, which is for contractual and negotiated increases. Uh, there was an increase. Under the expenses, under the contractual services line item, professional services, seventy-four hundred dollars. But the reason for this increase is that the Department of Revenue is now requiring that the utility companies that are in town. Have written yearly appraisals of their property. So when we go to do our evaluations, Victor will need to send those in uh to the Department of Revenue. For them to certify um his numbers. The main expenses within this budget, the professional services line item, seventeen thousand four hundred. Which is used for outside appraisal services, outside personal property services, and expert witnesses as needed for A T B cases. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is two hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Motion for the assessor department budget?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counsel Chines, um, discussion on the assessors department budget. I have a question, didn't we vote at town meeting that there was going to be some. I have a question, didn't we vote at town meeting that there was going to be some extra? Like assessments done that are done every decade, is that part of this? Or is that a separate item?
That, that was a separate article that we did at town meeting.
Okay, so we don't, that doesn't factor into this budget, either looking back or going forward, okay.
Correct.
Great. Okay, so there's no additional discussion, we can vote on the assessors department budget of two hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Councillor Danny?
Yes.
Councillor Nebraska?
Hi.
Councillor Santos?
Yes.
Councillor Butt?
Yes.
Councillor Chines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, town clerk.
Town clerk budget, we are recommending an increase to this budget for fiscal twenty-three of ten thousand seven dollars. This increases all in personal services and is for negotiated and contractual increases. The budget uh expense portion of the budget is level funded. Main expenses within this budget, the printing and binding line item, fourteen thousand dollars. This is used to print town bylaw and code books. Dog licenses, and is also used to bind old marriage, death, and birth certificates. The total budget request fiscal twenty-three is two hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the town clerk's budget?
So moved. Second.
Move by councillor Santos, second by councillor, but I need discussion on the town clerk budget. Hearing none. Um councillor Danny?
Yes.
Why, sorry, let me put, let me repeat the motion, so the motion is to um for a one, no, sorry, two hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollar budget for the town clerk, councillor Danny?
Yes.
Uh councillor Nebraska?
Hi.
Councillor Santos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt? Yes, councillor Chines?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, Mr. Gill, on to election and registration.
Election and registration, we're recommending this budget be level funded. Main expenses within this budget, the personal services line item, seventeen thousand one hundred dollars, which is used for the census workers. Under the contractual services line, for professional services, ten thousand dollars. We use an outside company, LHS, they come in, they help us with the census mailing, the printing of the ballots, and maintenance of the voting machines. Uh, we have a postage line item, sixty-five hundred dollars, which is used for absentee ballots. Total budget request is thirty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars.
I have a motion for thirty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars for the election reg- registration budget.
So moved. Second.
Move by councillor Santos, seconded by vice chair, but discussion on the election and registration budget, Mr. Nebraska?
Thank you, madam chair, um, do we, again, it, it's a small line item, but do we know, like, how many people actually um? Get the street list, because I see it's like a twenty-four hundred dollar expenditure, and is that something that we could just not have available online?
Uh, I, I have spoken with the town clerk on this item, uh, and, and she is cutting back quite a bit. So that, that is a line item that, that we can look at in the future that we could possibly reduce.
I mean, it just seems like, you know, again, it's the kind of thing that we can, you know, potentially, like, eliminate, um, I, I, I just thought, fully understand, you know, what, what the purpose is. And, and again, this is not big money, twenty-four hundred dollars, but when it, it all adds up, you know, as we've been going through this even tonight, so. All right, um, I, I think that that's something, again, that if, you know, town clerk could look into, because I don't even know how many we sell, I, aren't they sold? I think they're sold, I believe.
Some are sold.
So is, is the funny, is that, do the um, the net cost to us twenty-four hundred dollars then?
No, what, whatever is brought in, it just goes into the general fund as various uh receipts. Um, but you, you are correct, that, that, that there are many sold.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm just like wondering, like, you know, is that something that maybe has, has like, you know, um. It has gone, gone the way of like the VCR and like some other, and other things that are just not, you know, that, that needed within our, our community today. All right, thank you.
Or like the phone books they're still delivering.
Right, I mean, again.
Which I'm, we're looking into.
But throw it, throw it online, I mean, it's great if you want to.
Well, the library keeps archives of all town documents as well, so I think that's a great resource, um, sorry, I. I jumped in front of you, Jonathan, go ahead councillor Chines.
Uh, no, I, I was just gonna ask, and, you know, it's a small line item, so this is not an answer that we need tonight, but I, you know, I would be curious as to how many we actually sell and, and the revenue that we generate, I mean, this might be one of those situations where. Spend twenty-four hundred, but we pull in, you know, three thousand dollars to sell them. Uh, again, from my perspective, it's, you know, since it's such a small line item, and since, you know, the clerk's office is already cutting back, I have no problem approving this with the understanding that. Um, you know, if we don't spend twenty-four hundred dollars, it just gets returned to the general fund at the end of the year.
Right.
Additional discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion for a budget of thirty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars for the election and registration budget councillor Danny?
Yes.
Councillor Nebraska?
Hi.
Councillor Santos?
Hi.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Councillor Chines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, moving on to election.
The ele- election expense budget, we're requesting an increase to this budget for fiscal twenty-three of twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. This increase based on the number of scheduled elections. Uh, in fiscal twenty-two, we only had one scheduled election this year. Uh, next year, we have three scheduled elections. Uh, average cost of election is approximately twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Main expenses within this budget, the election workers, nineteen thousand eight seventy-five. This includes the wardens, the clerks, and the tellers. Uh, advertising line item, nine thousand dollars. And the caraboots, which is the setting up and taking down of the voting booths, it's ninety-nine hundred dollars. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I have a motion for thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for the election expense?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, move by councillor Santos, second by councillor, but councillor Chines?
Just a, a question, and, and again, I, I think it's small dollars, so it's, it's sort of immaterial to, I, I think, the approval of this, but. Um, you, you know, certainly we've increased this budget, you know, because there are three elections coming up. We carry the absentee ballot line item, though, in the prior budget, and it doesn't look like we've changed that. Um, i- is there a reason for that, or is that something kind of going forward that we should look at, at, you know, flexing that budget up and down depending on the number of elections?
I- i- it's usually pretty steady between one and two elections, or three, even three elections. The, the postage for the absentee ballots. Really. It's not overwhelming, it, it's the presidential elections that you see quite a bit of activity, so it's every. Four years, it, it spikes up, so we, we try to just keep it smooth, and like, like you had mentioned earlier, if it's not spent, it just reverts back to the general fund.
Got it, so just because it's a non-presidential election year and turnout is lower, you know, the, the, the flex on the, okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion for the election, election expense budget of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars councillor Danny?
Yes.
Councillor Nebraska?
Hi.
Councillor Santos?
Yes.
Councillor Butt?
Yes.
Bless you.
Councillor Chines?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, finance committee?
Uh, finance committee budget, we're recommending level funding. Uh, main expense within this budget under dues and memberships, thirty-four hundred dollars, and that's for the finance committee to be members of the MMA. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is seven thousand sixty dollars.
Okay, I have a motion.
So moved. Seconded.
Move by councillor Santos, seconded by councillor, but discussion on the finance committee. Budget. Councillor Nebraska?
Let's figure out, the contractual services for this would include what?
Sorry?
The contractual services would include?
Uh, contractual services is the, the big one, there is the recommendation book. We, we, we used to do the recommendation, the printing of the recommendation book out, out of house. Uh, we, we do it in-house now, uh, Sherry does a great job putting that together, uh, spends quite a bit of time and. Puts together probably a couple hundred books every year, uh, Sherry. Um, so. Even though the cost hasn't been shown in the finance committee's budget, it, it's been being picked up. Probably should have been transferred from the town council's budget back to the finance committee's budget. So, right now, i- it has been charged the last couple of years to the town council budget, because it's being done in-house now.
And sorry, I see, I see it on sheet B, so my apologies, like, I think you broke it down there, I, I thought, I was looking at it as two different entries, but. That falls under contractual, the recommendation.
Right.
Sorry, I got it, sorry, thank you.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Not, we have a motion for seven thousand sixty dollars for the finance committee budget councillor Danny?
Yes.
Councillor Nebraska?
Hi.
Councillor Santos?
I.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Councillor Chines?
Yes.
And myself, yes, conservation commission?
Conservation commission, we're recommending a budget increase for fiscal twenty-three of one thousand thirteen dollars. This is all in personal services and is for contractual and negotiated increases. Uh, this department consists of two people, each working ten hours per week. Uh, main expenses within this budget, uh, travel expense, a thousand dollars, office supplies, a thousand dollars. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is nineteen thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. With forty-four thousand eight eighty-five coming from the tax levy, and forty-five hundred dollars coming from available funds.
So do we have a motion for the conservation department?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, move by councillor Santos, seconded by vice chair, but discussions on the conservation department budget. Seeing none, we have a motion for a fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget of forty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars, of which forty-five hundred comes from wetland filing fees and forty. No, wait, I did that backwards, didn't I? So how do we, for forty-nine thousand, right?
What, forty-nine?
Forty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-five thousand, right?
Right.
Less forty-five hundred from filing fees for a total of forty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-five.
Correct.
Um, for the conservation budget. Uh, councillor Danny?
Yes.
Councillor Nebraska?
Hi.
Councillor Santos?
Yes.
Councillor Butt?
Yes.
Councillor Chines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Planning.
Planning board, we are requesting level funding for next year. Um, we, we did move some monies around within this budget. Uh, we, we decreased several line items, advertising, printing and binding, postage, travel. Uh, and we, we took that money and we increased the books and publications line item. The town's economic development director uses CoStar Realty. Uh, it's a online subscription, this helps her, uh. It, it shows her the commercial, commercial property that's available in town, uh, it also provides it. Statewide and also through the region, and, and it helps her uh a- assess, you know, what the trends are coming uh here in Wakefield. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-three is twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I have a motion for twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for the planning board.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, move by councillor Santos, seconded by vice chair, but councillor Chines?
Just very brief comment, I, I, I think, you know, the, the movement in this budget and, and the shifting around that's happened is a great example of, you know, using the funds that we have available. Um, you know, for purposes that generate value to the town, uh, you know, to have access to the software, I, I think, and to use that to allow our community and economic development director to, to do her job effectively is, is great, I'm, I'm really glad to see something like this coming through the budget.
Right, any other discussion? Seeing none, um, we have a motion for twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for the planning board budget councillor Danny?
Yes.
Councillor Nebraska?
Alright.
Councillor Santos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Councillor Chines?
Yes.
And myself, yes, board of appeals?
Uh, board of appeals budget, we are recommending level funding. Main expenses within this budget is, is the cost of their meetings. Uh, we, the total cost of a hearing uh with the board of appeals is five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we, we. Average that out, they, they have approximately fif- a little over fifty a year, so we, we use fifty as the baseline. Uh, that's what this budget is based on. This, this department does collect revenue. Uh, in fiscal twenty-one, they collected over sixty-six thousand dollars. Uh, so far to date this year, they've collected over seventy-five hundred. Uh, the numbers do vary quite a bit from year to year, depending on what, what type of projects are going on in town. Uh, last year, I, I think what was filed before them, the big one was, I think, the head of the lake. Uh, total budget request for fiscal two thousand twenty-three is twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Motion for twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars for the board of appeals?
So moved. Seconded.
Move by councillor Santos, seconded by uh vice chair, but discussions on the board of appeals budget. Seeing none, we have a motion for twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars for the board of appeals budget councillor Danny?
Yes.
Councillor Nebraska?
Hi.
Councillor Santos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Councillor Chines?
Yes.
And myself, yes, and finally, council on aging.
Yes, last budget, the council on aging budget, we are met, recommending that this budget be decreased thirteen thousand twenty dollars over the current year budget. This reduction is all in personal services and is due to a retirement. Uh, there are contractual and negotiated increases included in this budget. The expense portion of the budget is level funded. The total budget request is two hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred dollars.
Do I have a motion for the council on aging budget?
So moved. Seconded.
Um, move by councillor Santos, yawning, seconded by uh vice chair, but councillor Chines?
Thank you, madam chair, I, I just wanted to confirm, you know, with the, the reduction in staffing costs uh due to the retirement, I, I just wanted to confirm. Uh, whether or not there would be any impact to, to services offered by the senior center, my understanding is no, but. Um, you know, certainly, i- if that were the case, I, I think that's something that, you know, as a council, we'd want to discuss.
No, I, I spoke, I, I did speak with Julie Luciano, uh, there, there was a retirement up there, there, there was a little bit of overlap between the person that retired. Um, and the person that was replaced, that, that replaced the retiring individual. Is being paid for out of the budget. And. Another portion is being paid out of the grant, so there, there is no reduction. Um, it, it just reduces a little bit of overlap that they had up there.
Okay, great, well, no, and it's, and it's good that there was a transition there, I think that, that's also a, a sign of good, good planning and management, so, thank you.
Any other discussion on the council on aging budget? Seeing none, we have a motion for two hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred dollars for the council on aging for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three councillor Danny?
Yes.
Councillor Nebraska?
Hi.
Councillor Santos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Councillor Chines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, Mr. Gill, thank you very much, you made it through the first round.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Mr. Mayo, it's fine if you wanna, do you want to add anything?
Uh, no, I, I just, wonderful seeing you all.
Enjoy your time.
Thank you. Thank you, bye-bye.
All right, we're gonna move on, I think Mr. Mullin's staying with us, right, though, to guide us, okay. Um, item, item ten, vision twenty-thirty, um. Jonathan, you had wanted this on the agenda, so I'm gonna hand it to you.
Or, and, and I, uh, you know, I think this will be brief, so as, as everyone remembers, uh, we completed the vision twenty-thirty process uh about two months ago. Uh, and that culminated in the, the drafting of a, a pretty comprehensive and detailed report. Uh, supported by, by MAPC, uh, as well as the drafting of a, a vision statement as part of that report, and, and that's in your packet as well. Uh, we then put that out in November, uh, for comment, uh, both from the public and from this board. Uh, and had a couple of pieces of feedback that were incorporated into the final report that was then released in December. Uh, we never actually officially uh adopted that report, and so I asked, uh, last time that we put this on the agenda. Uh, just to give it the formal stamp of approval so that it can be officially used, uh, for example, by the, the master planning committee, uh, master plan, uh, uh, committee. Uh, a- as well as other groups, the ZBA, the planning board, and so forth, uh, a- as they do their work, so. Uh, you know, with that, I would like to make a motion to uh adopt the final report and vision statement, uh, as drafted by MAPC with. Uh, the support of our town employees and is presented in the packet tonight.
I would second the motion.
So we have a motion made by um councillor Chines and seconded by councillor Santos to adopt the vision twenty-thirty statement, any discussion? So we have a motion made by, um, councillor Chines and seconded by councillor Santos to adopt the Vision Twenty Thirty statement. Any discussion?
I, I just, before, uh, we get to, to any discussion, if, if I may, uh, Madam Chair, I, I would like to, again, just acknowledge, uh, the work of, uh, Erin Cook into our community and economic development director, uh, and Jen McDonald, our communications manager, uh, in putting all of this together. They, they spent countless hours, uh, with MAPC. Um, they did a lot of the work to, uh, refine both the language in the document, but, you know, probably more importantly, refine the survey instruments that we used and the materials that went into the, the virtual community forums. And so, um, you know, we had a lot of support from MAPC, uh, funded through a grant, uh, from them, which, uh, you know, was, was wonderful and definitely got this off the ground, but, you know, Erin and Jen deserve a, a huge amount of, of credit and recognition for their great work on this.
Councillor Dombrowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few observations relative to this. The, where it talks about, um, I, I guess it's the. Third bullet, fourth bullet down, um, enhances its, its neighborhoods with housing options for all and safe walking and biking amenities. I, I think the safe walking and biking amenities, um, we've had a lot of dialogue on, um, for some time here, uh, on this council. I don't understand really what that even means, housing options for all, and part of the concern that I have generally is, um, MAPC's goals and objectives may not always necessarily be, um, the same as a lot of the resident comments that we're hearing. I know that, and one of MAPC's biggest charges is to try to, um, yeah, increase density within communities and, and create more and more housing, and while I, I recognize and appreciate a need existing, um, I know, and, and speaking with councillor Danny too, in the past, I know that Wakefield, compared to a number of other communities, um, already has, you know, considerable density for, you know, the, the amount of, uh, footprint that we have as a town. And so, um, I'm hesitant to, you know, so, uh, vote in favor of housing options for all. One, because I don't, I don't think that it's something that is easily definable, um, at all. And two, I do think that it, it just continues to, uh, imply that we are looking to have, um, considerably, you know, more housing here within town, and I don't think we have the capacity or infrastructure to support that.
Councillor Chines.
Sure, so a, a couple of observations I want to make. First of all, I, I want to be clear that the content that went into the final report and the vision statement is not MAPC's ideas. It, it is based on the feedback that we heard from residents. Um, you know, is, is, is detailed in the final report, which is, uh, about a hundred pages long. Um, we went through a, a pretty exhaustive process, and I know, uh, a number of the councillors, uh, here participated in it. Uh, we had three virtual public forums, three public surveys. In the course of, of those interactions, we gathered, uh, basically close to a thousand individual pieces of feedback, uh, from residents and business owners in the town. And, and one of the things that we heard loud and clear, um, was a concern about balance. Uh, there was a concern that was expressed, uh, pretty loudly that, you know, we wanted to preserve the neighborhood character of Wakefield. We wanted to preserve certainly our natural resources, uh, and, you know, if there's a point in agreement, and this is probably no surprise, but if there's any point of agreement in town, you know, preserving, for example, Lake Wana Pao, it rises to the top. But we also heard pretty loud and clear that there was a concern about having the ability for people to both stay in Wakefield uh, as they aged or as their, their health considerations, functional status, um, changed. Uh, or to come to Wakefield in the first place, if they were starting a family or if they were building a career in Wakefield. And there was a, a, a very large, um, proportion of the people that responded in the surveys that said that there was a concern that there wasn't, uh, housing stock in Wakefield that was accessible to all. Uh, that affordability was an issue, that finding places for people to downsize and remain in the community, uh, was something that, that wasn't feasible, that there was a lack of starter homes, uh, in the community. Uh, and so when we talk about, um, housing options for all, I think what you're seeing there is not necessarily an endorsement of a particular mode of development or style of development. That wasn't the purview of Vision Twenty Thirty, that's, that's really part of a master plan process. But a sense that we want to make sure that we have a community where, uh, the people who want to live here or who want to stay here have those options, and there was a, a very strong sense that, uh, that, that promise is not something that we're living up to today. Um, I think we heard some of that feedback, uh, just in some of the stories that were shared in the housing forum that we had as well. And so, that's really the intent of that. There's a lot more detail, again, including the first full survey results in the, uh, in the, um, the write-up itself. Uh, where, where people can, I think, dig into that detail, and part of why we, we asked MAPC to do such a comprehensive write-up in addition to just a, a vision statement is so that we have the richness of some of that, that context. So again, whether it's the Master Plan Advisory Group or, uh, you know, even this council, as we think about policy decisions, you know, we have some of that source material to go back to.
Uh, councillor Dombrowski.
We, we as a town, uh, can't make a promise that we can provide housing that is affordable to all, because that's a promise we can never keep. It's, it's just not, it's, it's not realistic to expect that, um, that's something that at the town level we can do. We, we, we can't, we, we can't engineer that. We can't provide housing or make housing less expensive uh, or i- i- encourage, you know, um, the ability for, you know, more, more affordable starter homes on the free market. I mean, the real estate market obviously is very high right now, as we're seeing, it's reflected in, in our tax rate, you know, and, and the amount of oral paying in tax. I get that. I understand that people are frustrated by, um, it feels like a lot of communities becoming less and less affordable. But we as a town are not in a position to be able to control that, and I think to suggest that we have, you know, all these levers at our disposal that make that happen, so that everyone who wants to be able to either, you, um, buy in, into Wakefield or, you know, continue to live in Wakefield, and then you, um, have a starter home and then move it up to a, a larger home for a committed family. We can't do that, and so I think it's disingenuous to, to put that out there as if it's something that, that we do have control over. We, we just don't. And, I, I mean, if we, if, I understand, I understand people want to be able to age in place, I respect that. Um, I also understand a lot of younger people who grew up here are having more difficulty finding a home here to be able to raise their own families. I fully understand that, but we can't make it happen so that everyone can live in this community.
Um, Jonathan, I'll get to you, but I just, I just want to say, this is a vision statement, and I, and I really think that, th- I mean, I believe, and I'll speak for myself, I have a vision of a town, of that Wakefield will have housing options for everyone. And I do think we have certain levers. I mean, certainly, you know, definitions of affordability will change, but I, I'm, this is a vision, and I very much think that everything that is on this vision statement is something that we should be working towards, including having, um, housing options. I mean, to your argument, Ed, that, um, you know, we can't control that. We, we talk about business in here, we talk about festive events. I mean, we, we can't, you know, we all know government doesn't control every single thing that happens in town, but this is something that we will say when, when people come to us and say we want to build, or say we want to have a business, or say we want to have festive events, then it fits into this vision and that we, you know, will try to support it, so. Jonathan, I interrupted you, but.
No, you actually made my point probably better than I would have, so thank you.
Any additional discussion on this? Um, councillor Dombrowski, go ahead.
Again, the other piece I have relates to, um, the car dependency that it references. It says reduced car dependency by leveraging its commu- its commuter rail access and other creative transportation innovations. Again, being realistic, we live in a suburban community. So that the notion that we won't be able to rely upon a commuter rail that has often cut its service, but even when it doesn't, doesn't, um, realistically get people to most of the locations to which they would need to get to to be able to be without a car, is, is just not, you know, i- i- it, it's not a, it's not a realistic, um, expectation here. I understand, you know, we've talked about electric vehicles, the hybrids, you know, I understand that there's an interest in trying to, you know, find environmental solutions. And, and I get that, and I'm supportive of ways that we can do that now in, in a thoughtful manner, but we don't live on, we don't live on the T. We don't have, we don't live on, you know, different branches of the T. Uh, the commuter rail is, it is expensive i- if you're going to use it on the regular. It's not something, I mean, they get you to and from work. It, that's why it's called the commuter rail, because it gets you into Boston, you're, you're back here. That's its primary objective and purpose for a lot of our bedroom communities outside of Boston. But the notion that somehow we're going to be able to have, you know, uh, the ability to rely on the commuter rail to get people to the, you know, to the grocery store to target, you know, to whatever, to doctor's appointments, whatever that is, that's not, that's not realistic when we live geographically where we do. So again, I, that's, that's not something that, that I, I, I see as the kind of advancement that, that we can even be promoting in, in a legitimate way, because we're just not, we're not there. And, and we live too far out of, of the city. The T is not going to extend its way, you know, to Wakefield. It's just not gonna happen, so, um, I, I, I just, I take issue with that again, because, um, I don't, you know, i- it's not in keeping in with what can reasonably be expected, even optimistically.
Councillor Chines.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I, I think this is one where, um, I, I think the councillors that participated in the virtual forums, um, you know, recognized there was a lot of richness, richness in the discussions, and I think a lot of creativity around ways in which some of these visionary statements could be in part, um, achieved. A- as an example, one of the things we talked about when we talked about transportation in the virtual public forum uh, was the fact that many communities have facilitated public-private partnerships with businesses and residential developments in the community to have, uh, you know, shuttle services or other kind of non-MBTA managed transportation services um, that, that facilitate access in towns. We could be talking about things like bike share, uh, i- in this area. So a- again, you know, I mean, is it unrealistic to think that we, Wakefield are going to get the MBTA to expand, you know, substantial service here? Maybe, maybe not. Um, you know, I think that also depends on the policy choices that we're able to influence through legislative delegation and through, um, you know, whatever happens in, in the governor's race in the future and the priorities that are set at the state level. But that doesn't mean that there aren't things that we can do, um, public-private partnerships, we can influence policy decisions that we can make at the town level that make access in town more or less difficult. And I, and I think that's the, um, you know, that's, that's what you're seeing reflected here. Uh, there was a sense that these are things that are important to us as a community that were, um, you know, reflected pretty significantly in the responses that we got, both in the, in the virtual forums and in the surveys themselves. And that they were meant to be sort of a guidepost, uh, a, a, a reflection of, you know, some of the things that people would like to see. Again, to Julie's point, you know, will we be able to achieve each one of these things perfectly by twenty thirty? No, absolutely not. But, uh, again, to the extent that it serves as a vision, as an aspiration, as a guidepost for different policy trade-offs that we have to make in the future, there's real value here.
Councillor Santos.
To, to echo what Julie said, I don't have a problem with underscoring that this is a vision statement. I don't think that every statement in it, I, I embrace, um. You know, I love my car, I love driving in a lot of places. I have a big car that probably horrifies Julie. Had to carry a lot of hockey bags and dogs. So, you know, to me, that part of it i- is not, um, one of my focus in the moment, but I appreciate the vision statement of it, and I will just remind people, um, this quote came before my eyes a couple of days ago, and for some reason, I think it's really, um. It, it speaks to what we're talking about, Nelson Mandela, it's always impossible until it's done. So I think it's okay to, to think about having a vision of something that, um, would really help our community. We don't all have to embrace it, but I don't want to go, I don't want to go through, um, and pick out all the little points that I, that all of us may disagree with. I think as a vision statement, we don't have to embrace everything, but it's certainly so much work was put into it, so many voices were heard, for those of us that took part in these, this, um, the forum. So I'm, I'm okay with things that I might not embrace, but I appreciate the, um, the ideas behind it.
Councillor Danny.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that, I think that, um, councillor Dombrowski raises, um, some interesting points, but I do think that it is aspirational. And I also think that it can be interpreted differently. It's in the implementation of how it gets implemented. And I think that that's the work that we're doing with the master plan, is guiding us to the implementation. And so where it says, you know, housing for, you know, that suits everybody, what that means could be something very different to me than somebody else, and hopefully that will be guided, um, through that whole master plan process ideally. Is, that's my hope anyway.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yeah, I just, I did want to, um, thank Erin and Jonathan and Jen and everyone who worked on this. I thought it was such a great process of people coming together at the forums, and I do want to echo what, um, Chair Smith Galvin said, that it is a vision statement, it's kind of a goal, and I'm, I'm gonna disagree a little bit with you, Ed, is that we do, we do bake policies based on housing for all. So the senior tax credit is all about letting seniors stay in their homes. Like, we do make decisions based on that value of, we want seniors. What we just debated for an hour earlier in the meeting is to keep a senior in town in his home, like, that is housing for all in our community. And the other thing, um, we are a suburban town, but we are one of the only suburban towns with two commuter rail stations. Lynnfield does not have that, Middleton does not have it, North Reading does not have it, um, Stoneman Reading don't have two stops. So we are very unique in that, and I just, I don't think I've said this at a meeting before, but I, um, I, I live across from Greenwood, and I am pleasantly surprised at how many commuters do the reverse commute. And, um, workers take the commuter rail to Wakefield and then go work in our businesses. Um, they walk to Brothers, they work to Early Harvest. They go to a lot of the businesses downtown, and they're coming not from Wakefield, they're taking the commuter rail. And I just want people to remember that, like, I, I see them, I see them taking the bus, I see them taking the commuter rail, and I'm always like, you know, how cool that they get to work in Wakefield and not have to commute the other way. So I just wanted to remind us that it, it goes both ways, the commuter rail, and it is a benefit for workers that we have coming to town um, and helping to keep our businesses open.
Any additional discussion on this? I've lost track, but I think we have a motion and a second. Okay. So if there's no more discussion, um, we will vote to adopt the Vision Twenty Thirds, uh, Twenty Thirty Statement. As it is written in our packet. Okay, I think I'm not gonna read it all, there's a lot of, there's a lot here. Um, but people can see it in the packet. Um, councillor Danahy.
Uh, yes.
Councillor Dombrowski.
Uh, I.
Councillor Santos. Councillor Butt. Councillor Chines. Myself, yes. Thank you. And I do encourage people to look at that. I think we will be revisiting it a lot, especially with the master plan going on.
Yeah, if, if I may, Madam Chair, I mean, I, I think the intent is that, you know, we also revisit the document and the vision statement itself. Um, you know, at periodic intervals, not every year, but, um, you know, the, the vision, you know, evolves as our community evolves. It's meant to, a living process, and so, you know, I, I hope it's something that, you know, perhaps we don't have quite as involved of a process when we, we revisit this, but it certainly is something that I think the intent would be that we take another look at it, uh, you know, in a few years.
Um, and it, it is available in the library, right? Or, I know it's online, but do we have copies at the library?
Library, yeah.
Okay, good, good. Um, and maybe the senior center too. I know, I think it was there when we were originally going through the process, so, okay. Okay, Danny Anderson, nice to see you. We have, I only halfway through the agenda. Item number eleven, traffic advisory recommendation. You have, um, a proposal for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, everybody. Uh, we have a proposal for a no blocking restriction on the westerly side of Hopping Street from, uh, the Reading Town Line to the corner of South Street. So in the packet, there's some, uh, photos that were taken from a, uh, Reading resident of, I believe, Summit Drive, which is right on the, uh, Wakefield Town Line. And this is an issue that we really haven't had in the past, uh, so there are no, uh, current, uh, restrictions in the area. But, um, I think some vehicles have found their way there, and it's really, it's on a dangerous curve. Uh, if you look at some of the photos, if you're exiting from, uh, from Summit Drive, which, uh, is the home to Summit Towers in Reading, on the Reading side, and, uh, Wakefield Vista, uh, the two locations there on Hopping Street. Uh, it essentially, when, when you exit that. uh, the two locations there on Hopkins Street. Uh, it essentially, when, when you exit that access road, it, it forces you to basically go on the opposite side of the road if you were taking a left there. Uh, so we had a public meeting at Traffic Advisory and we invited the town of Reading as well because uh, part of it's on their side. And uh, as I know with parking, uh, when you create restrictions, usually displace parking problems elsewhere. So we would probably displace that into uh, Reading, and I don't want to do that to our neighbors. But uh, it is a little wider uh, in Reading. It's not on a curve and uh, their take on it was, there's one a butter there. It's a group home. There would be no place for their workers to park and they felt comfortable keeping on-street parking there in that area. Uh, on our side, it's more, you know, when you look at the map, it's more of a uh, a curve and then it intersects with South Street, which is a very heavily traveled uh, uh, side street that connects to twenty-eight and ultimately Route one twenty-eight for commuters uh, traveling to and from on that end. To further complicate matters, we have the Tarrant Lane Development, which uh, I don't think um, on-street parking would have become an issue uh, in this area because it's kind of unsafe to park there. But I think what probably happened was since the majority of the vehicles are commercial, just delivery vehicles from um, it looks like a bus company, there's a school bus, there's uh, a uh, utility body um, and a few other commercially registered vehicles there. So I think what probably happened was, you know, over the years, there, there probably was enough parking for personal vehicles in these developments, uh, both on the Reading and Wakefield side, but uh, one vehicle saw an opportunity to bring their work truck home with them or their school bus home with them, and then they parked there and they weren't bothered because there's no restriction. And then somebody else saw, well, I can bring my work truck home too. And then somebody else said, I can bring my school bus home. And now we have, you know, about six to ten vehicles parked on that curve there. So what we're looking to do is restrict parking on that uh, bend from the uh, Wakefield Town Line, which is pretty much just beyond Summit Drive and uh, all the way to South Street. I did speak with the one a butter at ninety uh, Hopkins Street and uh, I didn't want to restrict parking in front of somebody's home um, without speaking to them. And uh, they are in favor. They said it's, it's dangerous to back out of their own driveway and have vehicles there kind of in the blind spot, have other vehicles coming on the wrong side of the road as they're trying to back out. So he was uh, very much in favor of extending that restriction uh, that we ultimately approved it to Traffic Advisory from the uh, Reading Town Line on the west side um, of the street to South Street. And I think that it's an important time to do it with the uh, the construction that Tarrant Lane, get ahead of it now before people kind of uh, see this, uh, this impact and continue on. Uh, so I'd be happy to uh, answer any questions. Uh, but uh, Traffic Advisory, we thought that this would be a good idea from a safety standpoint. And there's only one a butter on the uh, Wakefield side. It would directly impact. He's in favor of it. So uh, I think it's a spot choice.
Any questions from the counselors? Counselor Chines? That's your neighborhood.
That, that is my neighborhood. So I, I'll uh, recuse myself from this vote, but just to say from, from personal experience, um, I do think the recommendation makes sense. I, I did want to ask um, maybe Lieutenant Anderson, if, if at some point we could look at having the uh, the speed trailer uh, uh, positioned on Hopkins Street. So you know, that, that is, uh, if you go further down into Wakefield, once you go over the bridge, there's a really dangerous curve there. And, and certainly we've seen speeds up, up there, for those of us who live there, uh, are, are pretty high. There's no sidewalk. And so it's a, it, it's a tough area. Um, I, you know, i- it kind of came home to me this weekend just because with the snow and the street narrowing, plus the fact that you know, you've got a popular sledding hill up there at Bear Hill. There were a lot more uh, kids and other people sort of walking around the neighborhood on, on what otherwise can be a busy street. And so just maybe a, a future request, if we can look at speeds and um, you know, evaluate whether there's a, a need to look at, you know, signage or other traffic coming uh, um, opportunities around that, that curve. I, I think there's some value there.
No doubt. No, I completely agree. We had that uh, Mass DOT had that uh, bridge project for a while and we had planned, I think we spoke a while back, we planned to get that out there. And of course, uh, it's solar powered, so now isn't uh, a tough time to get those out there. But we do have um, it's a more of a passive um, uh, vehicle um, count system. So it doesn't give the drivers any feedback, but it gives us a real sense of almost like a traffic study report. So that's something that's battery powered. It lasts about two weeks. Usually we do about three days for a traffic study. So I could deploy that and kind of see, you know, now, even though it's winter, it uh, it doesn't interfere with traffic. It isn't solar powered. So uh, the battery lasts long enough for us to do it. So I could get some, some figures now and then kind of see, um, you know, what days and times we see the most uh, the most violations. And we can get our smaller signs uh, that are uh, solar powered that we got through a ramp recently. Uh, those could be deployed onto uh, the, the telephone poles, uh, hopefully in April when the sun shines.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Any other discussion? If there isn't, um, I will entertain a motion to um, set the westerly side of Hopkins Street from the Reading Town Line to the corner of South Street as a no parking uh, restricted area.
So moved.
Seconded.
Right, so moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Butt. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Um, Counselor Danahy? Yes, I think I heard her say yes. Counselor Dombrowski?
Hi.
Um, Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Uh, recuse.
And recuse, okay. And myself, yes. So that is five in favor and one recusal. Okay, Lieutenant Anderson, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Thanks for your patience. Thanks. Okay, item number twelve, we have two public hearings to set. The first is for January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-second at seven oh five for a public hearing for the JWR family company located at one oh nine Water Street for an all alcohol liquor license. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Butt. Uh, any discussions on this? No? Uh, then we will take a vote. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Vice Chair, uh, Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. And the second is to set a date of February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two at seven oh five for a public hearing for CMRG LLC doing business as Tono Wakefield located at one seventy-five North Ave for Alteration of Promises. Have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Santos, um, seconded by Counselor Butt. Discussion? No? Um, Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, item thirteen, um, we have the vocational school election coming up on January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. And as you recall, this was passed in town meeting. Um, the election is not because Wakefield didn't pass it. It's because I guess some other town, two other towns did not in, in specifically. Um, so um, there, I, I think it might be interesting. I'll, I'll entertain a motion to kind of reinforce our vote in support of the vocational school um, as a signal to people voting uh, on January twenty-fifth, that uh, town leadership is in favor of this.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Chines. Discussion? Hearing none. Um, Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Great. Um, item fourteen, refer a proposed citizen petition um, for a zoning article to planning board. Um, these, this item is in our packet. It's a citizen petition that the planning board will um, have to take up. We simply um, refer it to planning board for review. Do I have a motion to refer the? Pull it up here. Um, re- refer the citizen petition is for a zoning bylaw one ninety dash thirty-one H.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? No? Okay, uh, Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think a- as a matter of right, Mr. Mullen, um, this is just a perfunctory vote. You know, we're not taking a position on that, on this. We're literally just, you know, they meet the requirements that would allow for this to, to go before the town meeting.
That's right. My uh, reading of chapter forty-eight, section five is that your can, uh, council has no discretion in the matter. It's your obligation to forward this to the planning board so that they can conduct a public hearing in advance of town meeting.
So they just, you know, for the public to understand, you know, I, I, we're voting to advance this because we, you know, we're required to do. So we're not taking a position either way.
That's right.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, um, having said that, any additional discussion? No? So we will take a uh, vote on the motion to refer the proposed citizen petition to the planning board. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, we have two donations. The first, a request from the library to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the library in the amount of four hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-four cents from various donors with thanks. Motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Butt. Um, discussion? No? Um, hearing none. We will take a vote um, for the donation to the library of four ninety-nine sixty-four. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And we have a donation to the Human Rights Commission in the amount of forty-eight dollars from Kayla Rush with thanks. This is a great story, a a donation from some sales at the Festival by the Lake. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Butt. Any discussion? If not, um, motion is to accept the donation of forty-eight dollars from Kayla Rush to the Human Rights Commission. Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Item sixteen, warrants. Counselor Chines?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just as an update on uh, December eighth, I signed warrants uh, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two. Uh, there were no warrants thirteen, fifteen, seventeen uh, and twenty-one. Uh, total for those warrants was twenty-seven point two million dollars. Uh, in, in addition, uh, the, the regular bi-weekly payroll warrants uh, were uh, were part of that. Uh, nothing unusual or out of the ordinary, nothing unexpected uh, details in the packet and, and certainly happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Counselor Chines?
Actually, I will say just one note. Um, uh, the, the comment about sort of wire transfers came up earlier. Uh, you know, looking at the warrants, we actually probably spend most of our money via wire transfer. Uh, certainly the majority of the checks, because they're small checks are, are paper, but uh, in terms of the dollars that go out the door, most of that does actually go out electronically versus, versus paper.
Good to know. Okay, we have come to announcements. Anyone have any announcements? Is everybody too tired? Counselor Danny? I saw her, I saw her real hand go up first.
I'm tired. Um, I just wanted to say that we had our first meeting for the Advisory Committee for the Master Plan and it was, it was fantastic. It is such a great group um, that is so diverse from people who have lived here for, you know, a year to people who have grown up here, people of all ages. Um, and so I think it's going to be um, a great diversity, people of different occupations. Um, we had racial diversity. It was, it was with men, women. It's a, it's a great group. And I think we're going to get a lot of ideas. And um, the conversation, people were not shy. So it was, everybody dug right in and participated. So I'll continue to keep you updated. And then we have Martin Luther King. We have Martin Luther King um, event on January seventeenth. Um, it was scheduled to be in person at ten AM and I'm not sure, is that still going to be in person? See if I know it's.
Oh, Sherry shaking her head. I know there was a discussion happening last week. Is there an update, Sherry?
Yeah, it was strongly advised for them to do it virtual. So I think that's the route they're going.
Okay, just sad, but so everybody should participate virtual.
Last year it was virtual and it was so, it was still fantastic. It was still really wonderful. And it's um, it's one of, it's one of my favorite um, favorite events. Um, it's very, it's a very uplifting um, time and it's a great way to honor um, Martin Luther King. So um, so look forward to, look forward to going to that. And then January twenty-fifth, just everybody please vote. Polls are going to be um, I think polls are going to be open only from eleven to six for that election. So um, please make note of that, but this is for the vocational school and um, I'm fully supportive of it. It's the, as is the rest of the council, since we just wrote it on it. But um, please just make sure everybody votes. And that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Chines?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and just piggybacking off of Counselor Danahy's comment, um, I did want to mention uh, Northeast Mr. Tech is doing a couple of virtual uh, forums about the school building project uh, in advance of that vote on the, on the twenty-sixth. Uh, they're coming up this Wednesday, the twelfth at six-thirty uh, on Zoom, like everything else is these days. Uh, as well as next Wednesday, the nineteenth, uh, also at six-thirty. So great opportunity. Um, you know, if folks want to learn more about the project to uh, to do so. Uh, you know, I, like Counselor Danahy and I think everyone else, I'm, I'm fully supportive of it. Uh, I, I think it's, it's incre- you know, the need is there, the demand for a modern vocational education is there. And so I'll certainly be voting yes and hope others do as well. Uh, a couple of thank yous. I think in the spirit of sort of volunteerism and the, the Martin Luther King and Coretta Scott King event, um, I wanted to first uh, just uh, put a shout out there for uh, the Board of Health in the Health Department for uh, the uh, the, the pre-holiday booster clinic uh, that they held in conjunction with the City of Melrose uh, at Memorial Hall in Melrose. Uh, even though it was in Melrose, they, our, our staff was all there. The um, there were a ton of volunteers uh, from Wakefield there as well and a ton of uh, residents of Wakefield uh, who got vaccinated. Uh, I, I just, you know, having volunteered for a couple of these, I, I just didn't continue to be amazed at how uh, well these are run by our Health Department, how professional they are. Uh, as well as just by the number of volunteers from our community and the surrounding communities that come out to help. It really is uh, inspiring and it was a, a nice way to spend an afternoon uh, just before the holidays. I also did want to um, uh, extend another shout out to uh, our youth council. Uh, and in particular, youth council member, uh, Juliana Spalding uh, for Wakefield Snow Angels, uh, which is a, a program that they launched this year where they're pairing up uh, teenagers from uh, the Galvin and from the high school uh, with seniors in their area. Uh, just to help out with uh, shoveling walkways uh, in stairs at people's houses. Uh, it, it's really a, a, just a great example of volunteerism and, and supporting the community. Uh, and uh, certainly for uh, any seniors in town that are looking for help, uh, you can reach out either to the youth council or to the senior center uh, and they'll hook you up. Uh, and then finally, just wanted to mention um, the uh, the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield's uh, team trivia challenge uh, is going to be on Saturday, February fifth, uh, virtual again, uh, as it was last year. Uh, but registration is now open for that. So uh, certainly uh, get your teams together and uh, and visit their website if you're interested.
Great. Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yesterday was, was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And um, I know that we often you know, um, comment on and or remark on how incredible the department we have uh, here in Wakefield. Um, but I do just want to, again, recognize the, the dedication and, and bravery that they show each and every day for us and also acknowledge their families who, you know, um, it, it's, it's, um, it, it's a job that impacts not, not just the officer, but also, you know, that, that officer's entire family. And so I, I want to recognize and, and thank everyone for their dedicated, dedicated service and sacrifice to us, um, as a community. Um, also, I wanted to just remind everyone that, that the season has come to an end and Christmas trees are being picked up curbside now this week. Um, if you're uh, a Blue Recycling week, uh, this is your week, put it out on the same day you put out your, your your recyclables and they will be picked up um, either this week or next, uh, next week being red, of course. Um, and finally, I just wanted to uh, mention um, that like I know many people on the council, um, I, I too, um, ended up uh, contracting COVID. And uh, I'm, you know, I'm in good health and I think relatively young. And I ended up, um, and I was a double accident and good health and I think relatively young, and I ended up um and I was a double back then and boosted. And um my symptoms were not mild, and they were not sniffles. And they, and I just want to just remind everyone that this is, you know, a virus. We're polit- we're we're politicians, you know, we're not scientists, so I'm not going to pretend to tell people what they should or should not be doing relative to this. But I can sit from my personal experience that everyone is different. And so um the reaction that you might have and the um the kind of impact that I may have on you personally is not something that you can predict. Um, and I was I'm incredibly safe, you know, I was wearing in in more recent weeks, you mentioned to me like an N ninety-five masks, even leading up to the holidays. Um, and um it got me, you know, like like so many. And so, I mean, I I know there's nothing unique about, you know, getting it now, unfortunately, so many of us have been through it. But I do just, you know, wanted to underscore to everybody out there, just understand that this is a virus that we just, you know, we we don't have a handle on yet, and and you just don't know how it will impact you. So please just don't make assumptions that, oh, it'll be nothing, you know, if if you infect enough, you know, um contracting it. So please just do all that you can, you know, to keep yourself safe and and our community safe, and I'll be good at that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, I'll add just um two things, just following up on the COVID. Um, thank you, Ed, for for sharing that story. I think we all have some pretty amazing stories from the last couple of weeks. Um, I just wanted to thank the Board of Health for um making, you know, what isn't always a popular decision. But we do now have a mask mandate um in private as well as public, which we've had for a while. Um, I know it's something they're going to revisit, but um ask for everybody's cooperation with that new mask mandate, and thank the Board of Health for um doing it. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that the um the bylaw on plastic bags and styrofoam finally went into effect on January first um after about a year um delay because of COVID and to be able to prepare some of the materials and inform the businesses. So that is now in effect. Um, no more single use, um or actually no plastic bags at all, and um restaurants in particular um not giving out styrofoam and straws and plastic cutlery upon request only. There are a number of businesses who are asking for waivers, um and we are looking at those and giving um some limited waivers when the justification is there. So um, thank you to all the businesses who are doing that. And if you see a business out there um doing it, you know, this is not an easy time. I recognize that, but please thank them and and uh uh and utilize them. So um, I think that is all I have. Anybody else? No? Okay, so um item eighteen, any matters not anticipated for the agenda? No? Then we will move to item nineteen. Um, I will take a motion to adjourn. Um.
So moved.
Second. Moved by councillor, um, but seconded by councillor um Santos. Um, any discussion? No? I'll just say that um we're scheduled to reconvene on January twenty-fourth at seven P M. Um, and uh councillor Danahue. Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Councillor Dombrowski.
Hi.
Councillor Santos.
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
Councillor Chines.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, everyone. Long meeting. Appreciate everybody's patience. Thank you, W C A T, Sherry, um, Mr. Mullin. See everybody on the twenty-fourth, if not before.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe, everyone.
Yep.
Bye bye.